Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a court?
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Here, Madam Clerk, your volume is very low.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, Councilmember Laloe?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shenear?
Here.
Councilmember Geta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
Mayor Steinberg?
Here. Good evening, everyone. Since tonight is the night of the city budget, I'm going to ask our Budget Director, once again, St. Onholm, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Members, we have a busy evening tonight. I want to welcome you, I want to welcome the staff, and I want to welcome especially the members of the public. And let us begin with a special presentation by Councilmembers Valenzuela and Vang.
Yeah, Mayor, I think I'm kicking this one off.
Oh, you are? I didn't see, I didn't see.
No worries, no worries.
You didn't? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
But, but we have, we have a lot happening tonight, and this is very, very important. So what I'd like to do is, we have two guests. I'd like to bring them up first, and then I'm just going to make a couple of comments and any other council members who wish to speak, and Mayor, you as well. So we have, from the American Redress Coalition of California, we have Kim Minns and Jonathan Burgess. So, Kim, would you like to lead us off, please?
Hi, yes, thank you for having me today. Thank you. I'd like to thank you, Jay Shenear and Katie Valenzuela of the Law and Legislative Committee for the assistance you provided from your District 4 and 5 offices to expedite our reparations resolution request, which is the special presentation we're here for today. Passes the Assembly Bill 3121 is a historic achievement in the state of California, and it's an honor to have the City of Sacramento recognize and acknowledge the grassroots advocacy work of the American Redress Coalition of California, R.A.R.C.C. Sacramento. Reparations has become a national conversation, not only because of the historic atrocities that stem from slavery, but also due to inequitable disparities that are still disproportionately impacting Black Americans today. The inequity space are numerous, and economic inequities are high on the list. My reparations advocacy work was spurred after facing discriminatory hiring practices while seeking employment with the City of Sacramento. A new city film office was adopted into charter in 2019. Not only was I instrumental in providing intel for the creation of the new film office, but I was also the only applicant with direct experience working for the Sacramento Film Commission when it was housed under the umbrella of the Sacramento Convention and Visitors Bureau, now known as Visit Sacramento. Given this overtly uneven employment playing field, reparations is the only solution to close the racial wealth gap. It's not just because I didn't get the film office position, but it's because I was denied the opportunity to even interview despite my civic contributions to the film industry in Sacramento. The wealth gap will continue to widen if these blatant economic barriers remain in place. With that said, this is why it's so important that Black residents are acknowledged for their civic contributions, and I applaud the City of Sacramento Council and Mayor Steinberg's office for recognizing on the record the reparations legislation, advocacy work done by A.R.C.C. Sacramento members. Since Sacramento is at the epicenter in this fight for reparations in California, I hope A.R.C.C. and Black American residents can count on your continued support. Again, thank you. Your time and action are very much appreciated in this matter.
Great, thank you, Kim, and we appreciate you telling your story. We also have Jonathan Burgess here, who is actually the descendant of one of the first Black families, I believe, in California. Jonathan? Madam Clerk, do you know if Jonathan is checked in?
I do not see Mr. Burgess online.
Okay. Why don't we do this? I just want to make a couple of quick comments and then turn it over to my colleagues. And again, Kim, thank you for representing here tonight. It's really important. I, I don't think, in the, in the scheme of things, there's anything more important than we're doing than looking and discussing and acting on issues around this topic area. We cannot be the city we want to be if we don't know each other's stories, if we don't understand what each of us has gone through and what others have gone through to get to where they are today, and what the challenges are, because, that we can work on and that we can actually mitigate. So this type of thing, to me, is why we're here. We can talk about programs and things like that, but this is step one, really, of understanding and accepting what the challenges are, what, how people have been treated, and what needs to happen to fix that. So I, I'm really honored to be able to help present this tonight. And what I'd like to do then is turn it over either Mai or Katie. I know you two both wanted to speak, and then I'll just turn it over to the mayor to, to get to others. Mai, do you want to go, go ahead?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Councilmember Shenear. Just thank you so much to you for bringing this resolution to City Council. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Kim, and also Chris Loxton, because I know he's done a lot of work as well, and really want to thank all of y'all just for your steadfast advocacy over the years and bringing light and attention to the need for reparations in this country. And I also just want to give a shout out to all of you, especially for your efforts in educating communities and the publics on, on the way, slavery, Jim Crow, and current policy and historical policy, the kind of harm that has inflicted on African-American descendants of U.S. slavery. I think we all know that this country has a racist history, and there are generational trauma and effects, and effects on African-American communities in this country, in the city. I, I do know that the problems we're facing, it's, it's deep and wide, and it's not going to be fixed overnight, but moving in this direction is absolutely the right step to really begin the paradigm shift in how we begin to remedy really a system that has harmed the Black community. And so I support this resolution that's coming to Council. Again, Councilwoman Shenear, I really appreciate you lifting this, and I actually really look forward to the task force recommendation, and I hope an in-depth proposal of how our state and our local jurisdiction can take bold action moving forward. So thank you so much for bringing this to Council, and, Kim, thank you so much just for your, your heart and hustle and your work on the ground, and all the advocates that worked really hard to, to get the state here to this moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and tagging on to my colleagues, Kim, and just, I feel like I always want to start this sort of conversation with, "I'm sorry it took this long" for California and Sacramento, and, I mean, our country to really take any steps, and there's still a lot of steps to take. In, in my mind, justice is, is in action. You know, it's something that we continuously have to pursue really actively, and justice for African descendants, this is just, it's long overdue. And so I thank you for your perseverance in getting us to this point. I know you've all had a really active role in the state legislation, as well as in your advocacy here in our community. And, and I believe that when we pass this resolution, this is us committing to, to sticking with you through this process until, until we've done what we need to do. So thank you, Kim, for joining us tonight, and Chris also, who's not here, and your other colleagues for all you've done and for being willing to work with us on this.
Great. Mayor, let me turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much for leadership and bringing this forward, the same to my colleagues, Councilmembers Vang and Valenzuela. Now, I see Councilmember Geta as well. I'll speak, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Geta. I, I just want to say, very briefly, that we have power. We have power as a city. And our power can take many forms, and does take many forms. One power is to help decide the arc of the city by where and how we choose to invest public resources, taxpayer dollars, in our city. And our obligation, it seems to me, among many others, is to ensure that we are continuing to invest in our neighborhoods and our disadvantaged communities with a focus on all communities, but a special focus on our African-American communities who still suffer the historical legacy of slavery. I look forward to the work ahead, not just the words, which are very important, but the actions, not just once, but over the long course of time. Councilmember Geta?
No, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think you, you just stated exactly where I think, where I was going to next, is that not only is it important for us to learn from each other's struggles, and particularly the, the, the tragic history of slavery in this country, but also to begin to right the historic wrongs that have created a very systematic, you know, oppression over decades, and, and that we look, we use our, our, our resources to be able to combat that. And I would hope that, and ask that, as we move forward with the Racial Equity Initiative, that this component of this resolution be part of that, that, that guiding document that's going to help move our city forward in ensuring that we right those historic wrongs. And, and, and thank you again for all of the work, and I think, you know, I'll kick it over back to Council, Vice Mayor Shenear here, because I think we, we had all, more participants joining.
Yeah, thank you. So, why, why don't we do this? We have a couple more council members who want to speak. I see Chris here. I don't know if Jonathan's been able to make it thus far, but let's go to Mr. Jennings, and then any other council people, and Chris, we're going to come back to you.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Kim, let me apologize on behalf of the city for not making the incredible hire that we should have made, and, and thank you for your work in, in pushing this through from the state legislative side. When I look at the definition of reparation, it says, "The making of amends for wrong that has been done by paying money or by helping those who have been wronged." And, and a lot of times, I think, as we go through life, just the acknowledgement, the, the verbal support, talking to each other, and acknowledging the wrong that has been done is what many of us are looking for. We can't go back in history and change history, but we can definitely change the present and the future. And so I just want all of us, as we move forward, to seek reparations, that we do it in a way that makes our fellow brothers and sisters, especially of those of African descent, that we reach out to them and let them know that we have been wrong, and history will not be the final answer as to what will happen in our life.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, thank you very, very much. Vice Mayor, I see Chris on the...
Yeah, let me see, Jonathan has, is Jonathan here yet? Just why don't you go ahead?
Jonathan is not online.
Okay, Chris?
Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, yeah. Just, just wanted to, again, thank the council, thank the community, and thank everyone who was involved in working on that state bill, and it really is a testament to the kind of talent that the City of Sacramento produces and can produce, that we have such amazing community members from the City of Sacramento working on this and continuing to do work on this, and the work is not done. So for anyone who is interested in learning about what's going on at the state level with this task force, including members here in the City Council, as well as people watching, we're doing a community meeting on June 26 at Cap City in Oak Park at 2:00 p.m. That's a Saturday. So please come, get your questions answered, learn about what is going on for reparations, both at the state level here in the City of Sacramento, and of course, elsewhere as well. Thank you again, appreciate you. Thank you all, really, really, for your support. This is, this has been a really awesome relationship, and I'm looking forward to the many great things that we're going to do going forward. Thank you.
Great. And, and Chris, and, and Kim, thank you for your leadership, both in this issue and, and in the community. It's much appreciated.
Likewise, sir, likewise.
Mayor, up to you.
Thank you. And, and I just would like to piggyback on what Chris said about, if you want to be involved, I'd be interested to see what types of proposals for the reparations task force that maybe the City Council can come up and present to the, the task force. That would be really helpful and, and interesting. And I know we have a standing meeting with District 4 Katie Valenzuela's office, so we'll definitely continue to keep you updated on task force activities.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Vice Mayor and Councilmember, is there a resolution to pass here tonight, or is it?
I'll, I'll go ahead and move it. I, I'm not sure if we need to pass it or not, but let's, let's go ahead and do that, just to...
Well, let's, let's get, let's get, let's get on record. It's okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah, my understanding was that we were voting on it, because I think we have to sign. I was looking at the...
Okay, well, let's, let's do it. Please call the roll.
This is a ceremonial resolution, but we will go ahead and call the roll. Representative Ashby?
Are, are, I mean, yes, but are we sure we need to call the roll on a ceremonial resolution?
We do not. It's a ceremonial resolution.
It's not, but it's confirming on the record that...
Sure, sure, yes, yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
A very strong aye.
Councilmember Harris?
So, I, I need a clarification here. This resolution is recognizing the passage of AB 3121, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenear?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. Good start to our meeting tonight. Gets us right to where we need to be here. Okay, thank you, guys. We'll be in there.
Thank you.
Okay, it's not on the agenda, but I know Mayor Pro Tem Ashby had a very, very brief resolution to a important sorority.
I do, Mayor. This is on behalf of your office and mine. Tracy Jackson, who you know, reached out to our offices and asked us to recognize the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority of Sacramento. This is their 40th anniversary, and we wanted to make sure that we acknowledged them. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority is an international community that is service-driven. It's an organization that was founded in January of 1920 in Washington, D.C. on the campus of Howard University. The Sacramento chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority was chartered in 1981 here in Sacramento. They're called Kappa Psi Zeta. That's their chapter. They have repeatedly acted to ensure that programs are focused and committed on the sorority's national programs. Mayor, they work to create a, a positive foundation for young women and develop their skills by offering scholarships and opportunity. This chapter in Sacramento paves the way for young women to attain practical experience in school and in service learning on their path to a degree, while instilling a strong moral foundation for a secure future of ethical and professional adults. And I want to thank Tracy Jackson and her team on behalf of the mayor's office and my own. We do have an official resolution for you, which Maisha Ross from my team worked on with the mayor's staff, and we will get it out to that great sorority. Thank you for doing all of your community service work and raising up young women in our city. We really appreciate you. Mayor, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Thanks for presenting that. Glad to be a part of that as well. Congratulations. Okay, members, let us move now to the consent calendar. Are there items on the calendar that members would like to have discussed separately and/or take off the agenda?
Mayor, I would just like to make a comment on item 5. We don't need to pull it.
Sure.
Mayor, I, I'd like to pull item 11 on...
And for a separate vote, Councilmember Vang?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, we'll pull that, and let's, we'll get to Councilmember Valen, Valenzuela's comment in a moment, but let's just go through. Anybody else? Any other items? I just want to make a brief comment on item 15, so... Good, all right, let's, can I get, then, a motion on the consent calendar, items?
I'll, I'll move the items separate from those being removed by staff.
It's only 11, only 11 to be taken up separately. It's been moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Second.
Okay, so it's seconded. Now we'll go to Councilmember Valenzuela for her comment on item 5.
Thank you, and I really want to take time to appreciate Peter and Jose to meet with Bridget and my staff to talk about this item. Remember, last week I pulled this because I was worried that we were tolling occupied vehicles, and that is not the case, and they've submitted a supplemental item to make super clear what the policy has been. So I just want to thank them for taking that time to make that clear. I would, however, like to direct the city manager, because this is a carryover, and one of the next steps out of this was, do we have clear guidance on what the process is going to be moving forward, which is a similar point that I made last week, now that the state's reopened and we're assuming the public health orders will change regarding folks experiencing homelessness. So I would love Chief, I'm sorry, City Manager to, if you would, I think Bridget and Peter should be a part of this working group, also obviously Police and Fire, since they interact and get those calls for the time being as well, to form a working group to develop policies and procedures regarding encampments and vehicles after the public health order, including hopefully a public-facing document that really outlines requirements and exceptions of the Boise decision mandates.
We'll do.
Yeah, I mean, I just would like to add to that, I suppose. I mean, I, I know that there's a lot of fear and concern of breaking up encampments once the public health order ends, and I, I believe our drive must be to find alternatives for people, whether it's safe ground, housing, or shelter, and that we should not be disrupting people's lives absent an absolute health or safety emergency unless we can offer that alternative. And that's what our mission and our work continues to be about, to both clean up the city and to provide help to people. Okay, I want to make a brief comment on item 15, just to say, this is great. We celebrate something really great here. There, there's no such thing as a silver lining. The pandemic was horrible, for all the reasons we know, but one of the positive things that came out of it was al fresco. And the fact that we collectively, as a city, led by the policymakers, but really by the city team and city staff who are working through all the issues, and the downtown, and the citywide restaurants, who are embracing this change. I just think this is a great thing, something that should be celebrated by Sacramento. Long enjoy the outdoors, especially when it cools down. And so let's celebrate this, item 15 tonight, and...
Mayor, could I, could I add something to that real quickly?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just want to note, and, and thank Matt Ironman and, and his folks for moving so quickly on all of this, but this is just a step towards permanency of this type of dining. We have a ways to go, and I know that, as we discuss the federal dollars, there are some options and some potential that we can do to create pilots and make this, make these permanent. So I'm, I'm really excited to look at that. In our convenings with the business community, this was one of the top-rated items of repopulating downtown, getting people back down here, is doing al fresco dining, and doing it outside of the corridor, or outside of the core as well, into some of our urban corridors. So I'm, I'm excited about this as well.
It, just add to that, I know Council, Vice Mayor Shenear will agree with me, but thanks Patrick Mulvaney for all of his advocacy for the restaurants during that pandemic. This was one of the things that he helped champion, that really tried so hard to work with us to try to keep as many restaurants afloat as possible, and it helped restaurants across the whole city, not just in Midtown and Downtown. So, agreed, really great, really great.
Super. Okay, so now let's, do we have public testimony on the consent calendar, with the exception, again, of item 11, which Councilmember Vang wants to take up separately?
I do have one caller on the consent calendar.
Go, go.
May I have the caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Roxanne Fuentes, District 3, and I'm commenting on number 4, the ordinance relating to accessory dwelling units. The proposed draft general plan to upzone single-family lots to up to six units is a bad idea. This would destroy many Sacramentoans' way of life. It would cause privacy issues and an increase in traffic on residential streets. It would most likely cause an increase in crime. Investors from out of state or out of country would come in without regard for neighbors' rights and cause gentrification, pushing people out. The proposed draft general plan would also eliminate city mandated parking minimums citywide, which would cause many difficulties for residents, as no onsite parking would be required. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you. Let us call the roll on the consent calendar, then, again, except for item 11.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenear?
Yes.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes. Councilmember Vang, let's take up item 11.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much. First, I just, yeah, thank you so much. I wanted just to provide some comment and some direction on this item before we move forward. You know, addressing digital equity is something that I'm incredibly passionate about, and first, really want to take this moment to say thank you to the work of city staff and our IT department, Maria, Natasha, and Darren, and also our partners at United Way for really pivoting during this pandemic to ensure that we get as many families on, and many households on as much as possible. I think many of us learned very quickly that during the pandemic, many of our low-income families weren't able to access Wi-Fi, and what that meant was, families could not just access, they couldn't access just our city council meeting, but that really meant that they couldn't access critical resources, right? And that, that meant access to basic necessities like healthcare, food, and services. And that's how we were getting information out, was online. I just also want to say, I had a chance to, I did have a chance to meet with staff and United Way, which I think this contract is for them, regarding our city's Digital Equity Response Program. And so first, I definitely want to acknowledge the great work that has already happened, and really pivoting to make sure we get broadband services to our most vulnerable communities. I had a chance to actually review the data of what we were able to deliver, and looking at the data, you know, I saw that most of the users that actually utilize our program came from District 5 and District 8, and I'm really hoping that we can up those numbers, but really appreciate that they were able to get out to those two districts in particular, because there were many users from those two districts. I also want to share, just on record publicly, that I know that there were many lessons learned and areas for improvement, and in particular, I want to call out that, for example, you know, we had 700 families that applied for the Comcast Internet Essentials, but unfortunately, only 17 households were able to register and actually go through the process. And so, you know, I want to know, wow, this is a great partnership, just really want to make sure that we're monitoring as well on how we're doing, and really adjusting to figure out what we can do to improve. I've also learned very quickly during my time here as a councilwoman that we actually are employing different strategies to address the digital divide, Mayor, right? Everything from what you've pushed from the Wi-Fi in several parks by Verizon. We got limited hotspots through our public libraries for checkout. And now, I think I saw an email from staff regarding a potential partnership with Comcast for opportunity zones for community-based organizations. I think there's a lot of great work going on, but I think a concern that I have is that we don't really have a coordinated effort or campaign to really get the word out on these types of programs, aside that it's incumbent, on, incumbent upon among city council members to just try to do the outreach. And I'd like to provide direction to the city manager, actually to work with my team to actually figure out how we can help streamline our outreach effort on this particular front. That's the first ask that I like to make to this item, and the second is, I also like a report back to council in a year on our progress on this program. And those are the two asks that I have on this item. One is to work with my team on figuring out how to streamline, and really to coordinate some kind of campaign effort, because we have lots of moving parts around the digital piece, but I don't think there's like a one-stop shop saying, hey, these are all the things that are happening, and especially because we're continuing this agreement with United Way. I want to make sure that we're, you know, giving this, the attention that it needs. And the second piece is to make sure... giving this the attention that it needs. And the second piece is to make sure that we report back to council, really on the progress of this program. And with those directions, I'll move to pass item eleven to renew the $200,000 for the city digital equity program.
Mayor, I'm happy to second Councilmember Vang's motion, but I would just add that she's been working with my staff as well. Karina Talamontas has been in a leadership role in this since during the pandemic, and happy to have her work with Councilmember Vang. She's one of her favorite people to work with. So I think that works out nicely for us, and I'm happy to second her motion. And, you know, one of the things that happened to us on the pandemic, as you'll remember, Mayor, because you were a part of this with the schools too, is that the schools got out ahead of us a little bit with the Comcast, and so we now know that maybe hotspots might be better than Comcast. So we need to work on that, continue to work with our library to help them get over the hump on being able to expand broadband there, and we knew that, but let's keep it an ongoing effort. This is another one, Mayor, that is a good act that started during the pandemic, but we need to keep it going. So Councilmember Vang started working on this from the bench, and now she's in the game, and she gets to help lead it, and I'm really proud. That's great. And if my chief of staff can stay engaged too, she's been very instrumental with outreach. Thanks, Mayor. You're on mute.
I'm on mute.
Did it again for the 120th time, on mute. The, it was again one of the great points of pride during COVID, that we took advantage of the resources and the desperate need, right? With so many kids out of school to do something about this, and it, and the message is, we need to continue this, right? This is the arc, this is the arc of the city, the changing arc of the city, and let's continue that changing arc in just this way. Great work. Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Vang, all the members, thank you. Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cheniere?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, thank you. That passes again nine to nothing. Members, we have a couple of, I think, pretty quick items, L and L, business improvement districts, and then what I want to do is combine items twenty-three and twenty-five, which is the operating budget, and the asset forfeiture plan, do that, obviously important work, and then we can end with urban water management plan. Again, I just, if it goes too late, I want to make sure the water plan gets appropriate attention here. So you might reserve the right to continue it, but only if necessary. Let's see how, how long the budget goes. Okay, let us begin with, let's do twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two as quickly as we can, please.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. Eric Frederick with the Finance Department. The item before you is the annual public hearing for the citywide landscaping and lighting assessment district. Annual assessments are levied in this district to finance the maintenance of city parks and other public landscaped areas, street tree maintenance, and the energy and maintenance costs of streetlights throughout the city. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution in your packet that will confirm the budget and levy the assessments for fiscal year 2021, 22. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Motion?
Open and close the public hearing, move the item.
Second.
Second, public testimony?
I have no callers on this item.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cheniere?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Passes nine, nothing. Item twenty-one, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Steinberg. I'm a member of city council, and my name is C.D. Moxie with the Finance Department. The item before you is the public hearing to approve the annual reports and levy the assessments for fiscal year 2022 for each of the following business improvement areas, also known as BIAs. On May 18th of this year, council adopted the resolutions of intention for the BIAs setting today's date of June 15th as the date of the public hearing. At this time, staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing. Upon the close of the public hearing, after all testimony and written protests, if any have been received, staff will determine if a majority of protests exists based on the written protests submitted to the city clerk in complaint form and read into the record by the city clerk. If the majority of protest does not exist, staff recommends adopting the six resolutions containing the report.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public testimony?
There are no callers on this item.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cheniere, seconded by Councilmember Geta. Please call the roll.
Can we open and close the public hearing, please?
Yeah, that includes opening.
I never said a word, but thank you for reading my mind, Mayor. I appreciate it.
No, I'm used, I'm used to the legislature. We substitute motions, we move. Go, go.
Public hearing was open and closed by Vice Mayor Cheniere, seconded by Councilmember Geta. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cheniere?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye, thank you. That passes nine, nothing. Twenty-two.
Yes, I have item twenty-two. The item before you is the public hearing for the renewal of the Power in Property and Business Improvement District, which at this time, staff recommends opening the public hearing. Upon the close of the hearing, the city clerk's office and city staff will count the ballots and report back to council as a consent item on June 29th with the tabulation results. Thank you.
Thank you. No public testimony?
There are no callers.
Councilman Geta?
I'll move the, I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Cheniere.
You got it.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cheniere?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Staff, I know these are important items, and we're very hard on them. Please don't take the short order in terms of the public process to mean anything about the importance of the work. We know a lot goes into it, so thank you. All right, let's take items twenty-three and twenty-five together, the budget and the asset forfeiture master plan. This is a big item for our city, and I'd like to begin with Ms. Holm, our Finance Director. How do you, how do we intend to proceed tonight?
Good evening, Mayor. What I'd like to do is go ahead and turn it over to Chief Hahn to deal with the asset forfeiture. Both items require separate actions, so we'd like to pass the forfeiture and then the budget.
Okay, just, is there, Madam Clerk, is there separate testimony on asset forfeiture?
Yes, there are separate call queues for both. I don't have any callers for item twenty-five right now.
That's what I mean. You don't have any caller. Okay, then let's spend twenty-five. Let's go with asset forfeiture. Go ahead, Chief Hahn.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Don. As you just said, Mayor, I'm Chief Hahn, your police chief, and I'm here to present the asset forfeiture master plan for fiscal year 2022. Per city policy, the police department must present an annual asset forfeiture plan to city council. In addition to presenting its plan to council, this year, the police department recommends revising the policy to include clarifying language consistent with statutes and regulatory guidance. I'll begin with describing what asset forfeiture is. Asset forfeiture, also known as equitable sharing, is a civil procedure that determines whether money and/or property seized during criminal investigations are profits of illegal activities or used to support illegal activities. When the court determines that seized property is subject of, to forfeiture, the funds are first dispersed, first to innocent property owners and victims, and any remaining balance is shared amongst prosecutorial agencies, law enforcement agencies, and the State General Fund, and a statewide ethics and legal update training nonprofit organization comprised of prosecutors. There is a mandated formula to disperse the remaining balance, 65% to law enforcement agencies, 15% of that 65%, set aside for youth programming, and the balance, 85% of the 65% to support law enforcement efforts, 10% to prosecutorial agencies, 24% to the State General Fund, and 1% nonprofit ethics and legal update training organizations. For federal asset forfeiture, otherwise equitable sharing, there is no mandated formula. So the proposed spending plan for fiscal year 2022 totals $597,000, or a little bit more than that, and is consistent with policy. As stated in local policy and applicable federal and state regulations, allowable uses for the funding include, as you see on the screen, support for law enforcement operations and investigations, law enforcement training, education, travel, and per diem, law enforcement and public safety facilities, law enforcement equipment, drug, gang, and other prevention awareness programs, and support of community-based organizations. For fiscal year 21, 22, there is $83,000, $83,000 in new state asset forfeiture resources, and $25,000 in the U.S. Department of Justice resources, available to support community-based organizations that offer anti-drug and anti-gang programming to Sacramento youth. Programs are selected based upon record of success with community and are required to report program and financial activities on a periodic basis. This, and you can see the organizations on the screen that are part of that portion of asset forfeiture. And this, Mayor and council, concludes my presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chief. We don't have public testimony on this particular item, so why don't we take this one up first before the budget? Just a little reverse of the plan I talked about a minute ago, but it's okay. Are there council questions?
Mayor, just one quick clarifying question for the chief.
Okay.
Is on the, on the anti-drug gang prevention grants that go out, you've got city of refuge, cops, and kids, and the others, how, is that through an RFP process, or how, how are those decisions made about the funds, and do we try to interact with the gang prevention monies or the youth monies that we're putting out as well?
Yeah, those are made at the, at the department level and the police department, so most of those are programs that have already been part of the program and has showed good success.
Okay. So I, I would suggest if we can for next year, I think this is great, and they're all great organizations, but thinking about how those interact with a lot of the other grant programs that we're doing, I think would be worthwhile. So if we can, City Manager or Chief kind of put that on the back burner when we start, start working on next year.
Mayor, I'm happy to move the item.
Mr. Mayor, add my hand up here.
Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Geta, then Laloe, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move the item and give staff, and then with the direction to begin, for the City Manager to bring back a policy that moves the percentage of the forfeiture away from operations and more into the programming, and to include the use of an RFP process to come back.
Yes, what we've talked about, and you did suggest at the Budget and Audit Committee, as I recall. Okay.
Mayor, I think I already made a motion to move staff's recommendation forward as it is. Maybe I don't have a second, but I did slip in there and move forward the staff report as it is.
Are you, are you willing to take a friendly amendment then, Councilmember Geta, just to have that report?
I'm, I'm happy to take Councilmember Cheniere's motion or friendly amendment, which was to have Howard talk to the police department about it, but I don't want to add it into the, into the staff report, no. But what Councilmember Vice Mayor Cheniere said is fine for them to work it out, coordinate.
So, Councilmember Geta, I will commit to you, because I don't think, I want to get into a dueling motion thing here, that I will ensure that we bring this question back to the city council for full discussion and action about the, the policy relating to the future expenditures of, from the asset seizure fund. I will commit that to you on the record.
Ken?
Mayor, I might add in the law, there is a procedure for the final approval of those asset forfeiture funds, which involves the sheriff, the DA, and the police chief. So there's, there's a mandated process at the end, once they're proposed to be funded.
I understand. I just think Councilmember Geta is making, I think, a worthy suggestion here in terms of framing up at least a policy recommendation from the city council, and I, I'm saying, it doesn't have to be part of the motion. I commit that we'll bring it back in, and, and work with you to do so, okay?
I'd like to hear Councilmember Vang, and then I'll, and then I'll make some comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I think my comment was, I wanted clarity on Councilmember Gera's just motion, because my understanding was, if I understood correctly, was to also, with this motion, is to also come back to, for a policy on the percentage piece, which I would support. So, because if we don't do that, Mayor, I'm afraid it may not come back, just because there's so much, and I want to make sure that that's on record, so.
Well, so technically, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby made the motion first, and so I, I, and so that's a motion that's pending. I'm not sure, I haven't heard a second yet on that motion. Okay.
I second. Mayor, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, so it's, that motion is seconded. Councilmember Geta has an additional suggestion that Councilmember Ashby did not want to take, and I am suggesting then, rather than have dueling motions, I commit on the record that I will, I know they worked with Councilmember Geta and you, Councilmember Vang, but I will ensure that the question that's being raised is, is agendized.
Mayor, may I jump in for a second? I have a suggestion that we can bring, do a report back to the council, once we better understand what the limitations are on how we can allocate these funds, what the mandates are, and then send, send that back as a report to the council, so we can better understand the parameters.
I understand, but once we understand the parameters even behind the scenes, I still want to come to the council to at least discuss what Councilmember Geta is asking, because I think that's, that's the request of a member, and I do it for any member here to, 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 to put it back. So, Eric?
Look, I'm not going to, we have a long night, so I'm not going to get into a, a dueling debate here, but the, the fact that we use asset forfeiture, one-time money, even though that there are good restrictions, then for operations, it's, it's a poor way to do it. And yes, if there is a way to do it, we should be looking at a policy and moving those monies to one-time uses rather than relying on, on them for our operational costs. It's just, it's bad budgeting, or restrictions to it, that's fine. That's why, why I wanted to have a policy come back. But I'm willing to move forward, because we've got a long night, but the percentages are up. If you look at the percentages, Chief, could you please pull up this slide that shows the percentages? Back where we were, there was, there was a different slide, I think, where you were with grants. I think there was a different one that you used for, at Budget and Audit, that showed the difference in, in usage. Well, I won't belabor the point, but the point is that you spent $200,000 in operations, and only a fraction of that in, in the youth programming services. And I just feel that it's important to make sure that, that if it's going to be an operational expense, that it go into the operational budget and not be using asset forfeiture, when that could be used for good programming, along with the RFP. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor, and we can call the motion, the, the question, so we can get on with the business of the day. But I could see that there's objection to, to doing that, and I want that noted, that we look at this policy, because we should not be relying on the forfeiture of assets or our operation of our, of our city.
I understand it's, it's, you raised an important question, and, and I'm committing to you that in the appropriate way, you know, we got to understand what the limitations are, the state law, et cetera, as the chief said, but I, I commit to you that we're going to, we'll make sure that the question is, is raised. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Count, Vice Mayor Cheniere?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that's nine to nothing. Now, now we get to the main event. Dawn, Ms. Home, the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two city budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dawn Home, the Director of Finance. This evening brings the conclusion of our fiscal year 2021, 22 budget process, and the changes recommended to the proposed budget that was delivered on April 21st. At the conclusion of our discussion, I would ask the council adopt the budget resolution as amended. Over the past six weeks, we have presented the council, Budget and Audit Committee, and Measure You Committee with an overview of the budget, discussed the budgets for the operating departments and the capital budget, as well as some changes needed to correct the proposed budget. Based on these discussions, we're recommending the addition of a fully offset position to assist with the Cannabis Core Program Policy Development and Youth Outreach, five hundred thousand in funding for the Fuel Network, and six hundred and eighty thousand for Women and Children's Shelter Funding to support the five applications received from the city's RFP process. Additionally, we are recommending changes to the proposed resolution to address the need for a new fund to account for the American Rescue Plan, address potential shortfalls in the fourth hour fund resulting from the pandemic, which will allow us to transfer savings in the Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department at year-end to correct any shortfalls in the fund, to perform an equity analysis as part of all budgetary recommendations made to council, and, as highlighted in the supplemental information provided last Friday, to allow the flexibility needed to realign and manage Measure You and General Fund expenditures as requested by the Budget and Audit Committee. Finally, during the process, we received thirty-five questions or requests for information. Responses have been provided to all but six of those requests and are included with this agenda item as supplemental budget information, or SBIs. The remaining items will be added to the council follow-up log after budget adoption. We have revised the five-year forecast to reflect the changes discussed. This forecast represents general fund revenues less expenditures by fiscal year, absent the use of one-time resources. As reflected in the forecast, despite significant revenue growth, our expenditures are projected to exceed revenues in fiscal year 22 and for the term of the forecast. In May, council authorized a two-point-two-million-dollar expenditure change in the Water Fund, which affected the five-year forecast presented in the proposed budget. This forecast represents the status of the Water Fund based on this change. No other enterprise fund changes have been recommended. Finally, while we are asking you to adopt the budget tonight, this is not the end of our budget discussions, as we will be coming back in July for a full discussion on the American Rescue Plan, and will continue to provide updates to council throughout the fiscal year as appropriate. This is truly a team effort, and I would again like to thank the council, city manager, Assistant City Manager Milstein, the executive team, and all department staff that have helped in the development of the budget. I also would like to give my sincere thanks and appreciation to our budget team. Small, but, small but mighty, this team has done an amazing job in getting us to this point, and I really appreciate their hard work and dedication. With that, I would like to turn it over to Chief Hahn, who will cover SBI twenty-nine, and then will be followed by Chief Loesch, who will cover SBI twenty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, we said it at Budget and Audit, but a big thank you to you and your team who worked many months and long hours to get us to this point, and we appreciate it very much. Chief Hahn?
Thank you. I'll second that. Thank you to Dawn and her staff. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I said already a minute ago, I'm your Police Chief, Daniel Hahn. Before I get into what a nine-point-four-million-dollar cut to the police department budget would like, look like, I'd like to quickly go over the current state of affairs in Sacramento. We are currently, as a department, authorized seven-hundred-and-fifty-one officers. We were authorized eight-hundred-and-five officers over twelve years ago in two thousand and eight. We are currently authorized three-hundred-and-forty-seven professional staff members, which includes dispatchers, CSI, records clerks, CSOs, and others. In two thousand and eight, we are authorized four-hundred-and-sixty-seven professional staff positions, which is a hundred and twenty more than we have now. During the same time, our city population has increased by eleven percent, and our city has changed in many other ways. A new Golden One Center downtown and more community functions. In addition to the need to manage protests and other activities that are prevalent in our city for multiple reasons, including the fact that we are the capital of the most populated state in our country with the fifth-largest economy of the world. We are one of the lowest-staffed police departments in the country at approximately one-point-four officers per one-thousand. For example, Oakland is one-point-seven officers per thousand. San Francisco is two-point-five officers per thousand. At an operational level, we signed up three-hundred-and-nine officers for patrol in two thousand and eleven, the core function of a police department, responding to calls and emergency, calls of emergency, among other needs of our community. Because of our reduced staffing, this year we signed up only two-hundred-and-sixty-three officers in patrol, which was an increase over last year, two thousand and twenty, when we signed up two-hundred-and-forty-five officers. A significantly lower number of officers to handle an increasing number of calls for service in our neighborhoods. So far this year, our median response time to emergency calls that require a police response to preserve life or apprehend subjects is ten minutes and thirty-one seconds. The same time last year, it was almost a minute quicker, at nine minutes and thirty-four seconds. There are many contributing factors to this, but the largest factor is limited staffing that is being pulled in many different directions. As we all watch on the news, there is an increase in violent crime all across our city right now, all across our country right now, with no end in sight. There seem to be mass shootings on the news on a weekly basis, the last one being in Austin, Texas, where fourteen people were shot in their entertainment district. This past weekend, late Saturday night, early Sunday morning, we could have easily had the same type of violence in our entertainment district in Midtown. At approximately one-twenty in the morning, over a hundred people ran out of an establishment, and several people were assaulting another person. There was talk of someone having a gun. Officers had to be pulled from other areas of the city, and other law enforcement agencies had to be called to assist with stopping the violence. In the process, someone punched the victim right while he was standing right next to one of our officers, and ultimately assaulted one of our officers, who sustained a laceration and a swollen area to his face. Hundreds of people were part of this altercation, and luckily, no guns were fired or located. This past Sunday night, officers responded to a multiple, to multiple shot-spotter activations that recorded well over a dozen gunshots in the neighborhood in our city. Officers arrived and located numerous casings in the area and determined that a kids' party was taking place where a gun battle broke out. Numerous cars and homes were struck by gunfire. Luckily, no one was injured. We were fortunate that a hel, that the helicopter responded and assisted officers on the ground in locating possible suspects. One of the suspects discarded a loaded gun as officers were attempting to detain him. These are daily occurrences in our city. Currently through May, we have had a hundred-and-twenty-four percent increase in the number of people shot in our city. That's a hundred-and-ten people this year compared to only forty-nine people last year. We have seized over six-hundred-and-eighty-five guns, which is a fifty percent increase over last year's total of four-hundred-and-fifty-five guns. We have significant increases, just like most cities across the country right now, in homicides and aggravated assaults. Our city has a very high traffic accident frequency rate. We used to have four traffic teams working our city. We now currently have one team with nine motor officers in our department. Traffic is usually the top issue brought up by our neighborhoods. So far this year, we have had fourteen fatal traffic collisions in our city. This is a fifty-five percent increase over last year, when we had nine fatal collisions. There are many things that go into keeping our streets safe with our city's Vision Zero, which our city's Vision Zero is working hard on. But a critical component of traffic safety in our city is the ability to conduct traffic safety education, traffic safety warnings, and traffic enforcement, all of which are impacted by limited staffing. We have a process called Code One that our watch commanders utilize in patrol. When a watch commander calls a Code One, it directs patrol officers to no longer conduct self-initiated or proactive activity and only handle calls for service from our community. This is utilized when it is extremely busy with calls for service and/or major incidents such as a mass shooting, a homicide, or other unrest in our city. We now routinely have hundreds of people involved in sideshows, groups who take over Old Sacramento and engage in large fights, where guns have been recovered by our officers at some of these events, and a growing trend in taking over private swimming pools and apartment complexes with one-hundred to two-hundred people. These are just a few of the things that happen on a nightly basis in our city. Watch commanders in our city have called for a Code One over ninety-five times since April of last year. This equates to us being too busy for much-needed proactive work by our officers for a shift, for multiple shifts, or a portion of a shift, one day every four days. As I speak to major city police chiefs on a regular basis, these issues are prevalent in most major cities across our country. Oftentimes, they're even worse in other cities. Another issue cities are dealing with is a significant retention problem where officers are leaving departments in droves. We do not have that issue in the Sacramento Police Department. Every chief that I speak with across our country is very concerned about the rising violence and the possibility of violence increasing even more as we open up across our country from the COVID pandemic. I'm also very concerned, due to our limited staffing, that we, we will not have the capacity to deal with the increases in violent crime and what will surely come as we emerge from this health crisis. The fans returning to Sacramento Kings game, the return of festivals, concerts, and hopefully, a Major League Soccer team, and the protests that come with being the capital of California. In my opinion, a reduction of nine-point-four million or more to the police budget will be devastating to our city and especially the communities that call on us the most. The nine-point-four million increase does not increase our staffing. It pays for mandatory perves and contract increases and funds to replace, for the replacement of current fleet vehicles. So the only way to achieve ongoing, an ongoing reduction of nine-point-four million dollars is through labor, as that's where the majority of our department's budget is allocated. For example, our services supply budget is twelve million dollars, or seven percent of our total budget. Our proposed overtime budget is five-point-one million dollars, or three percent of our total budget. Our labor budget is ninety percent of our total, uh, total budget. So a reduction of nine-point-four million would result in the elimination of ninety-six-point-five FTE or positions and numerous layoffs. Positions that would be eliminated would include fifty-three community service officers, ten-point-five student trainees, three community service representatives, twenty-one forensic investigators, or more commonly known as CSI, one, uh, social services administrator, one police lieutenant, two police sergeants, and five police officers. I will now discuss a little bit about the result of what those reductions have caused. To address the loss of the workforce of twenty-one forensic or CSI members, the position of four background investigators, the department would have to move sworn staff from the following specialty teams to fill in behind those positions. Pop, traffic, shot spotter, magnet academy, and so, and so I'd like to go over some of the ramifications for those now. For the problem-oriented policing, we would remove one officer from each area's pop teams that would, uh, reduce the ability to address community concerns, reduce the ability to address neighborhood-specific crime problems and patterns. And I know all the council members on here know very well what pop officers and the pop teams do. The four traffic officers that would be eliminated provide the primary traffic enforcement and education for our entire city. Traffic enforcement would decrease to one day every two to three weeks in each district. Shot spotter, we will completely eliminate the twelve shot spotter officers. These are officers dedicated to the three geographical areas covered by shot spotter technology and are typically the first responders when gunfire is detected by the shot spotter system. The impact of not having these twelve officers would then, that, that work would then fall to patrol officers. And it's a fairly high priority call, so patrol officers would now be responding to those calls, oftentimes would most likely be pulled from other areas of the city because of the high priority call. Magnet Academy, this is something, as many of you on this council know, it's near and dear to my heart. As I started the Grant High School Criminal Justice Academy, we would eliminate all five academies. We have academies currently at Kennedy. That one's been around since the eighties. Grant and Johnson, been around since the mid-nineties. McClatchy, and our newest one at Intercom High School. These programs build relationships and mentor over five-hundred-and-eighty students on an annual basis. Students have access to free resources that are provided through the Police Foundation for ACT and SAT prep, financial literacy training, college mentoring, twenty-four thousand dollars in scholarships, and college trips. Participating students, as a requirement of being in the program, have performed over twenty-four thousand hours of community service. The magnet programs are eighty-eight percent racially diverse, and fifty-four percent of the students are women. Community service officers. Cutting the fifty-three positions in our community service officers program, those on council know, we just recently, in the last couple of years, have increased this program, the numbers of this program, would cut four-point-nine-six million dollars and equate to fifty-three positions. The community service officers returned as part of the department's hiring pipeline that began in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen. The hiring pipeline program has been successful in recruiting and retaining an ethnically diverse workforce and has improved the gender equity within the department. Fiscal year seventeen and eighteen, fifty-nine percent of our new hires for sworn and through the hiring pipeline positions were minorities or women. In fiscal year nineteen, twenty, that increased to seventy-two percent. Losing these positions would impact women and diverse candidates as this specific career path would be eliminated. Having CSOs also helped decrease the response time significantly where a sworn officer is not necessary, such as traffic collisions, burglaries, stolen vehicle recoveries, missing persons, traffic control, booking property for sworn officers among the calls for service that are not in progress or involve a suspect or non-violent calls. This has also allowed officers to be more available to respond to only those calls that a police officer can respond to. Our CSO class that graduated last year in two thousand and twenty was, was eighty percent racially and gender diverse. The class that just graduated this year was eighty-two percent gender diverse. Our forensic investigators. A little history, when I first came on in the eighties, our CSI positions were all filled by sworn police officers. The chief then moved to civilianize and create these positions as professional staff positions, among other positions in the department, one, to save money, but also, what we've found is that our professional staff has a lot more expertise, both formal education and experience, to do this job. And so now they collect DNA, have lab, examine things that our police officers did not do, because they have master's degrees and bachelor's degrees in forensic science. As professional staff are not sworn, they cannot, they cannot absorb the duties of sworn positions and cannot provide mandated public safety services, whereas sworn employees can be used to fulfill non-sworn duties, although not nearly at the expertise level as our professional staff has. The elimination of twenty-one forensic investigator positions would save two-point-three-three million dollars. However, given the forensic staff's training, schooling, and expertise, like I said, we would lose a lot. With our forensic, and they would all be filled in with police officers like we did about ten years ago when we had the significant budget cuts. With our forensic investigators being predominantly women, this elimination would undo our progress, or some of our progress with gender inequity in our department. Other positions that we would cut, including, include twenty-two-and-a-half FTEs and amount to two-point-eleven million dollars in savings. Included in that are ten student trainee positions, ten-and-a-half student training positions. This, this department began efforts at increasing This, this department began efforts at increasing racial and gender diversity through its hiring pipeline in fiscal fifteen and sixteen, like I mentioned a minute ago, and the intent was to help transition young adults from both the Criminal Justice Academy and the cadet programs and other areas of our community into careers in law enforcement. The Criminal Justice Academies, um, as I mentioned, there's five of them, so these are typically the students that move into student trainee positions, which are paid while they go to college. Uh, as mentioned previously, the hiring pipeline includes student trainees, CSOs, and others has been successful in recruiting and retaining diverse candidates, which is what really is, uh, we can attribute to our growing diversity and the fact that we are not having some of the same issues in hiring that other cities across the country because we've created these pipelines that also bring a significant amount of diversity. The community service representatives, this is a position that is dedicated to proactively conduct outreach in our community and engage segments that have little or no relationship with the police department, conduct crime prevention training such as SEPTED, personal home security, scams and schemes, host neighborhood watch meetings and other community meetings, coordinate national night out and neighborhood-related events, and create neighborhood watch groups. The next one that would be cut is the one police services, or excuse me, social services administrator. This is unique to our department. I don't know of any other department that has a social, a master-level social worker supervising both professional staff and sworn staff. This position also supervises our teams such as the mental health team, the impact team, our contract division, um, and provides a much-needed, um, expertise for our department. Uh, the next position would be one police lieutenant in our professional standards unit. This position is to provide direct managerial oversight and direction to our reorganized professional standards unit, which has expanded in scope and in numbers over the past several years. PSU was expanded to enhance the department's capacity to comply with legislative mandates related to critical incident media and video release, police records, data collection and reporting on use of force incidents, data collection and reporting on police citizens' contacts, recommendations contained in the two thousand and nineteen Department of Justice report. The position is necessary to oversee compliance with current and new laws and to review and provide oversight of the PSU's work in internal auditing, use of force reviews, statutory reporting, and community transparency releases. Next, two police sergeants, one for internal affairs, um, as our work in internal affairs grows, not only due to community, uh, um, inquiries and complaints, but also for the new state and council mandates. Uh, the other sergeant would be for the unmanned aerial support, or other words, most people call it drone unit. US, UAS unit provides tools for de-escalation by reducing human-to-human confrontations. The sergeant would manage his forty-one pilots and will respond to on-call requests for area and interior searches as well as supervising personnel on major incident deployment. Um, we have seen the benefit of this tenfold over the, since we've implemented that unit. Over the past several years, our police department has embarked on numerous efforts to increase its transparency and accountability to the community. As unintended result, workload in internal affairs division has increased significantly, but no additional staffing allocations have been made. Work changes include, but are not limited to, the implementation of body-worn cameras in addition to the in-car camera system. Each internal affairs case takes longer now, there's more things to search, which is a good thing, but it takes longer. In response to the California Department of Justice recommendations and audit, the department has revised its procedures for handling internal affairs complaints. The new policy ensures a more thorough internal affairs process, but is an increased workload for internal affairs. And lastly, the five officer positions, uh, one is for internal affairs, again for that increased workload, the other four is for backgrounds investigator. As many know, some of the rules for PERS has changed, so we can no longer use the staffing that we used previously. Not having these positions will delay background process due to staffing shortages, and we would lose quality candidates because it's taking too long and they, and they apply from multiple departments and they would go elsewhere. Um, lastly, I want to quickly touch on what a thirty point five million dollar budget decrease would be. So it'd be all those things we just talked about, but in addition to that, that would require the elimination of nineteen additional sergeant's positions and a hundred and eighteen police officer positions. That would mean that we would pretty much be solely responsive in patrol and cut investigations to primarily, uh, the core investigative teams such as homicide and felony assaults. Would include cutting things like human trafficking, bike unit, neighborhood crimes unit, gangs, recruiting, summon PIO, criminal intelligence unit, internal affairs, PSU, and many others. Would also mean that we would probably no longer respond to things like burglary calls or property calls or some of our more minor calls because we would not have the personnel to be able to respond. So with that, um, that concludes my presentation. I believe now I am turning it over, and correct me if I'm wrong, Don, but I believe I'm turning it over to Fire Chief Gary Loesch at this point.
Yes, that's exactly right. Thank you, chief. From chief to chief, Chief Loesch.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm in the process of sharing my screen. I'm your fire chief, Gary Loesch. Can everybody see my screen?
Not yet. There it goes.
Okay. With the, with the next slide. So this, first of all, I'd like to go over, and this is our twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget summary again. As you can see, what our, we'll go down to the general fund and net total that I presented this, uh, a couple of weeks ago, the FY twenty-one amended was one thirty-seven point nine, proposed was one forty-two point seven, so the change is four point eight. What was not in the city manager's proposed budget was the addition of two point two for the diversity outreach and recruitment or door program that we're proposing for FY twenty-two. Uh, direction was for the fire department to show a seven million dollar reduction in our overall budget. So, our budget summer, summary, four point eight million annual increase is attributed to two point one million employee services and two point seven million in supplies and services. The increase for employee services is the result of negotiated step increases and associated increases in benefit costs, as well as increased cost for retirement contribution in the California Public Employee Retirement System, or CAL, CALPERS, as required by the city's contracts with CALPERS. The increase in supplies and services include expenditures related to the statewide ground emergency medical transport, or GEMT, and quality assurance fee, which is QAF. The department is required to pay the fee to participate in the, the GEMT program as a medical services transport provider. Increased contractual obligations related to our fire plan review services related to the increased development throughout Sacramento. Both the GEMT, QAF, and fire plan review expenses are offset by revenue. While the root revenue related to those expenses is included in the current FY twenty twenty-one revenue budget, the associated increased costs were not. The increase in cost in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget will right-size the expenditures budget based on the additional revenue received. Next, please. So, for, to bring, uh, for our first read, uh, op, uh, option for reducing our budget by seven million, we would remove the two point seven million budget augmentation, which is what I just explained, the GEMT, QAF, and fire plan review. Add resolution language similar to what we did in the twenty twenty-one mid-year to augment the budget at year-end based on revenue received and expenditures paid. Furthermore, we would reduce vacant professional staff, an account clerk in fiscal, an office specialist in emergency medical services, and a customer service representative in training. These reductions would slow vendor payments, purchasing, staff training, limit, limitations to internal customer service, and an overall increase in workload for remaining staff. Furthermore, we would reduce the department's emergency vehicle operations course. This would reduce technical driver training for all department staff and also response to department accidents and would affect other city services, uh, offered services to other departments. In other words, uh, other departments had their members go through our, uh, course. Also, we would reduce the fire academy, uh, by eleven point five FTEs, which in all honesty is twenty-five fire recruits. Eliminated, eliminating the fire academy for one year for twenty twenty-two would cut, and this would cut and reduce this year's fiscal obligation of funding for fire recruits. However, the vacancies would climb due to attrition retirements within the department. This also would increase the workload burden on the already overtax suppression members due to minimum staffing mandates. The elimination of this class would have a direct impact on hiring opportunities and the ability to hire more diverse workforce. We'd also would reduce the proposed diversity outreach and recruitment program request. We would reduce the request from two point two million to one million. This would not eliminate the program, however, would greatly affect the projected outcomes for the program. The department suggests repurposing the one million dollars allotted Measure U for suppression overtime to fund the diversity outreach and recruitment program with Measure U funds. However, the reduction of the diversity outreach and recruitment program would limit the outcomes regarding the following measures of the Race Gender Equity Action Plan, two, three, four, five, ten, and fourteen. We would also reduce the vacant fire prevention officer. This reduction would reduce projected revenue, delay critical site inspections, and increase the workload of existing staff. We would have the closure of Medic Two Fifty-Six. This medic unit is a second unit located at Station Fifty-Six at Forty-seventh Avenue and Martin Luther King Boulevard and was placed into service in January of twenty twenty-one. Medic Two Fifty-Six was added to help with the unit hour utilization call volume in our heavily impacted south area and also captures lost calls within city limits that are being dispatched to other EMS entities. The closure would increase unit hour utilization times, reduce critical emergency medical services, reduce EMS-related revenue, and impact the community at large. Furthermore, we would reduce department supplies and services budget, reduction of five percent of supplies and services to all non-revenue generating divisions. This would impact department's ability to provide safety equipment and station supplies, would increase the department's reliability on vendors to provide equipment and supplies in a timely manner due to a reduction of funds to maintain inventory and a reduction of potential cost savings related to bulk purchasing. The effect of reduction of supplies and services will negatively affect our members as well as our ability to provide quality service to our community. Budget reduction option two, again, would be remove the two point seven million budget augmentation as I spoke about before with GEMT and QAF and fire plan review, again, adding the resolution language that we similarly did in the twenty twenty-one mid-year to augment the budget at year-end based on revenue received and expenditures paid. Also, again, the reduction of the proposed diversity outreach and recruitment program request, again, reducing it to one million dollars, again, not eliminating the proposed program, however, would greatly affect the projected outcomes of the program. Department also, again, suggests repurposing the one million dollars allocated Measure U for suppression overtime to fund the diversity outreach and recruitment program with Measure U funds, and the reduction of the diversity outreach and recruitment would limit the outcomes regarding the following measures, again, uh, in two, three, four, five, ten, and fourteen. Also, would be a closure of one fire company that would eliminate twelve FTEs. This would not only impact the safety and service the department provides to our community, but it would also cause daily staffing instability and movement. It would also cause increased response times, crew integrity would be compromised, and mandatory training schedule would be severely impacted. It would reduce overtime. Overtime savings would occur if the department is required to close one fire company, as I just stated. However, fewer firefighters would be available department-wide. Staffing with limited firefighters will impact the department's ability to render effective service. Remember, the fire department does have minimum staffing requirements. Overtime costs will be reduced by the graduation of twenty-two fire recruits later this month. So, the fiscal impacts versus the community impacts. As these options would reduce our fiscal obligations, there is also a great impact on the department's ability to operate efficiently and effectively for our community. While the department continues to incur increased call volume annually, these reductions would result in fewer available units respond to, respond to calls for service. With the growth, growth of the city, not only in acreage, but also in vertical construction, we will be reducing the services to our community, increasing property loss, and impacting the safety of our residents and employees. As a reminder, a fire doubles in size every minute that it burns unchecked, or a patient is critically considered clinically dead within four to six minutes without EMS intervention. The reduction to staffing throughout the department will hinder our internal, external customer service, will impact our ability to provide timely and effective response, and will challenge our relationship with, within the community and our partner agencies. In conclusion, neither of these two options are optimum for the safety of our residents and employees. Indications of early fire season, within the last two weeks, Cal Expo has suffered three major wildland fires, two two-alarmers and one three-alarm. That doesn't even include the six minor fires we had there that did not make it into the media. Sunday night, we had a three-alarm fire in downtown at the Amber House that was very destructive to two homes down in downtown. The residents of Sacramento pay for fire department services, and these proposed cuts should not be at the expense of their safety. As your fire chief, with over thirty-five years of experience in the fire service, I cannot in good conscience recommend cuts that will imperil the safety of our residents and members. While we are eager to implement the diversity outreach and recruitment program, it should not be funded by service reductions that place our citizens at risk. Increasing response times and decreasing staffing is contrary to our mission as a department. Since becoming your fire chief in two thousand and eighteen, nothing that I have asked for or have put in place has been fluff or nice to has. Everything has been absolutely essential to maintain basic operations for a city of this size and density. During my tenure as your chief, I have done as much as I could do to promote diversity in our department with absolutely no funding. I now respectfully request that the door to the Sacramento Fire Department, which is our diversity outreach improvement program, is funded with no cuts to the ser, to, for service to the citizens of this great city. Thank you. That ends my presentation.
Chief Loesch, thank you. Thank you to both you and Chief Han. This was very important information, a presentation, requested by, um, my members of our council, and I think it's really an important, uh, discussion to have tonight as we, as we look at this budget. And I know I will make my comments in, in a few moments, but let's, uh, Madam Clerk, how many members of the public would like to testify?
I have thirty-six callers.
Wow. Okay. Let's go.
May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, this is Pat. I'm a resident of the Ben Ali community, um, in District Two. I can't believe you are out of your minds if you're going to cut over forty million dollars from our police department. This should never even come to a vote. You just cannot cut the police budget. We cannot ask, not ask officers and police department to serve and to protect us because there will be no officers or even the police department. So Sacramento, capital of California, will no longer have a police department. Are you in a position that to go out to your districts to handle all the three eleven and nine-one-one calls that will be coming in? Because if you are unable to police your own districts, how can you ask the men and women to a job you are afraid to do? Now take a look at the reason that the police officers will be losing their lives because they will die. Funny, these are all the same officers who are putting their lives on the line, willing to die for us. Not having even enough money to support their families or other officers watching their back. And to use this money to support the homeless, you need to take, you may to, need to take a look at your homeless problem. Add up all the money spent in the name of supporting the homeless. We taxpayers have and are still paying for empty trailers, empty campers, empty tiny homes, and empty hotel rooms. California is building over twenty-five thousand new homes with a move-in price of over three hundred thousand dollars. Where would the city get the monies to place the homeless in these affordable living homes? We voted you in not to reduce our police force, but to enhance this police department. It has happened to all, what has happened to all the money that has been received in the last five day to eight years for the homeless. We need more, not less.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I am a supporter of the police department, Pat, residence of over thirty years in the Ben Ali District Two.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the city council, this statement is in adamant opposition to any reductions to the Sacramento Police Department budgets. The expectations of the people of the city of Sacramento upon electing you to your offices were that they would have a safe atmosphere to live, do business, and recreate. However, statistically, we don't stand a chance to recognize that. During the first quarter of twenty twenty-one, crime statistics were highly on the rise, specifically homicides up sixty, that's six, zero percent. Aggravated assaults, twenty-eight percent. Motor vehicle theft, fifty-five percent, and an astounding increase in gunshot victims, three hundred and thirty-three percent. You served to do nothing by dimin- by reducing the budget of the Sacramento Police Department than to diminish the expectations of the people of the city of Sacramento that you were elected to serve. Remember, city council members, as you place your vote this evening, you'll be able to credit yourselves with the outcome of this vote. And please be sure to recognize that you will be accountable should you vote to reduce the budget of the Sacramento Police Department. You are voting to completely and thoroughly disregard public safety for the citizens you were elected to serve. So, in closing, please do not, under any circumstances, reduce any budget item for the Sacramento Police Department. And please increase the budget capacity for the Sacramento Police Department. The same holds true for other public safety officers from fire. And I am Sandra Betancourt on behalf of the Ben Ali Community Association.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Council District Two.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Jameson Parker, Director of Advocacy and Capitol Improvement for the Midtown Association. I'm calling this evening to voice our support for the recommended fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, budget that's before you. I wanted to start by thanking the city manager and city staff for bringing a budget forward that is responsive to community needs even in a time when we have such, uh, dire constraints to the, with the pandemic. Uh, the Midtown Association is a property-based improvement district with the mission of making Midtown the center for cultural creativity and vibrancy in our urban core. One of the biggest factors, uh, to creating a vibrant and welcoming environment is making people feel safe. Uh, during the pandemic, we have seen how challenging the virus has been for businesses, residents, and visitors. And we have seen a rise in quality of life issues that have required significant amount of resources from the city and organization like our own. At the Midtown Association, we've experienced a twenty-five percent increase in safety and maintenance-related calls within the last year. As we look to reopening our economy and welcoming visitors back into our core, it's important that we have the resources that can support that reopening effort, and we appreciate the direction for the city to make, creating a safe and welcoming environment priority in this budget. Uh, lastly, Midtown's looking forward to discussions on how the cities will prioritize funding from the American Rescue Plan. Uh, as, uh, as referenced with the consent counter around the FRESCO program, we saw really incredible innovation, collaboration, and equity uh, in the administration of funds from the CARES Act. We're half, uh, hopeful that the infusion of over a hundred million dollars can continue to uplift our neighborhoods and businesses as we come out of this pandemic. I urge you to pass this budget and move forward with the conversation around the American Rescue Plan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Uh, good evening. This is Tina Nichols from District Two. The city has spent over twenty million dollars on services related to the homeless. And how much money have you collected from cannabis? Millions. And yet you want to reduce the police and fire department's budget? And these are the individuals that we need to keep who also help us preserve order in our city. Again, our police are under, appreciated, understaffed, and underpaid. This shouldn't even be a consideration on your budget to have a cut. The chief's proposed budget in both the fire department and the police, it should be granted. In fact, you should be giving them more money. I completely support our police force and ask that you not reduce their budget on either department, but increase their budget not only for our safety, but for the health and well-being of our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sam Davis. I'm a retired police officer with the city of Sacramento. Um, for fourteen years, I was a magnet officer at Hiram Johnson. And I love working with those young people so much that I earned a couple of teacher credentials and I retired and now I'm the teacher in that Hiram Johnson Magnet Program. I've seen this program lead to success for hundreds, if not thousands, of former students from these academies. Uh, you know, many currently work for the city of Sacramento and live in the city of Sacramento. These magnet cadets learn life skills and pathways to career employment. And that's so important to learn. This is the type of program that keeps young people thinking and being positive. And with today's climate, we can use a lot more positive. In my opinion, after seventeen years of being in the Magnet Program, it's, it's the quintessential police and the community in its finest element, and that's working together. So I need to make sure I get this message across because this program is very important. All right, and, and, and the last thing that I'll say here is, um, I've been in situations like this before. We had a situation where they were talking about possibly getting rid of the program. And I just kind of want to point the finger at the city council members that do not know about this program. Because if a person knew about this program, we wouldn't even, this wouldn't even be a conversation. This, that's how good the Magnet Program is, and I've seen it work. And it's one of the only programs that we have out here where the police and the community are working together.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Dion Dewire with the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, and I'm calling to share our support for the proposed city council FY twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget. The pandemic has impacted our city, our neighborhoods, our commercial corridors, and we're all struggling to reopen. During this crucial time, we must continue to invest in key areas that are critical to reopening our daytime and our nighttime economies. This includes considerations for safety, cleanliness, and accountability. The original budget contains important tools that help address ongoing threats we see to public safety and the needs for staffing to address ever-increasing marches, events, and citywide calls for service. Reductions to the public safety budget would have devastating impacts on the essential services that continue to provide safety and support for our community, neighborhoods, and again, our central city. We must, the budget, we must support public safety, accountability, and help our city reopen in a safe environment. Our businesses, restaurants, nightlife, our community is reopening, and now is not the time to reduce funding of our critical public safety partners. We ask that the council approve the budget tonight without reductions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm calling in from District Three. A two-minute, uh, time is nowhere near needed to dive into the plethora of problems with SACPD and the institutional policing in America. But because of time or strength, I'm just going to put it plainly. SACPD will never serve the true needs of our community. So why do we fund them like they do? They will never have the capacity to address the real core issues that lead to violence and crime in our communities. So why are they prioritized like they will? SACPD will not and could not ever take the place of fundamental community programs for the youth, for mental health, for the arts, for schools, for unhoused, for housing, and for job creation and building infrastructure, infrastructure, sorry. So once again, I'm asking, why do we fund them like they do? If you want to talk about public safety, let's get into that. The uniform crime reporting statistics presented by SACPD for this year from January to April shows the most reported crimes are largely assaults, robberies, larcenies. While mur- while murders and rapes are more likely to go unreported, it still begs the question, couldn't all these crimes be prevented by investing in community services instead of police? The police did not stop any of those murders or thefts. So why do we fund them like they did? I urge you city council members to go door-to-door in neighborhoods like Oak Park, Meadowview, North Highlands, Arden Arcade, Del Paso Heights, South SAC, Rosemont, and tell them that you believe a cop is more beneficial to their neighborhood than a teacher or a social worker or a youth organizer or a mental health advocate, and see what they say. It is simple. With this current budget proposal, you city council members are prioritizing policing and the money police make over the basic needs, health, and human services of Sacramento residents. Chief Han proved my point perfectly today by saying that they cannot address every crime in this city when it happens. So why would we fund a system that admits it can't keep up with crime? This is because you don't prevent crime with police, you do with community programs and healing. All I heard from him and other callers, callers who support budget increase is fear mongering.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Thank you for the city council members. I strongly support the people's budget and all their demands today in reducing the police budget.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public viewing this meeting. My name is Jeff Pease. I have been a resident of Sacramento District Three for twenty years. My wife grew up in Midtown Sacramento, and we have raised four children in this city. I am a member of the Sacramento Fire Department and have been for twenty years as well. My entry into the Sacramento Fire Department was through the intern program, which was later discontinued. During the recession, the fire department and other city departments saw reductions. We saw the intern program disappear, and we experienced years of station brownouts. We are currently experiencing a staffing crisis in the fire department. Our existing staff is overworked to cover vacant positions. The quality of our service is compromised, and we are returning to browning out stations. The real danger of these brownouts is that the public is not aware of the change in the service they receive. Engines have to travel from further away to respond to emergencies, but they still arrive, so the public doesn't see the decreased level of service that they're getting. Uh, the diversity of our department needs to be effectively addressed as well. Although we are more diverse than most surrounding fire departments, in relation to other city departments, we are among the least diverse. Increasing this diversity in our department requires resources. We need dedicated staff to build this, and we need the return of the intern program to reach local residents that might otherwise be missed in the employment selection process. I hope you will all recognize the need to fund these programs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. I'm calling in to object to Councilmember Valenzuela's proposed budget cut to the police department. Myself and my neighbors support our police and believe we need more officers for our community. Without additional officers, our city will suffer from higher crime rates and safety insecurity. Police staff have earned and deserve our support. Their profession has been categorized as the enemy by politicians. Furthermore, the hiring of activist Tyler Henry to Councilwoman Valenzuela's staff is very concerning to our public safety. Mr. Henry has publicly stated, quote, "Sacramento's mayor and city manager should be terrorized for the rest of their lives." Mr. Tyler has also publicly circulated wanted posters, lettered in bloody.
Mayor, can we ask people to stick, stick to the Brown Act here and?
Yeah, excuse, excuse me. Um, that's right. We're talking about the city budget. Um, not about, uh, the issue that you're describing. So if you have a comment on the city budget, you're welcome to continue. If not, I'd ask you to please, uh, allow us to move on.
Okay, I will continue. It's time to swing the pendulum back to the men and women who have chosen a career of public safety. They need and deserve community support. I propose adding to their annual budget to hire and train much-needed additional officers. Crime has been on the rise, and I myself feel unsafe. Our community needs proper police staffing parallel to our growing population. I suggest council members go on a few ride-alongs to get perspective and education on what our officers encounter day in and day out. This experience may help your understanding of the most difficult, commendable profession that they hold. Myself and my neighbors have nothing but respect and appreciation for our public safety staff. Thank you. Cheryl Prinzo, District Four.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
All right, well, I just want to say good evening to everybody. I'm a student from John F. Kennedy's Criminal Justice Academy, and we hear that you are cutting our program. But I'd love to elaborate that the academy has not only been a huge part of my life, but has been a huge part of many others. It has given us a sense of belonging, opportunities, and scholarships that we would have never discovered on our own, and the feeling that me and many others, and many others are part of something bigger than ourselves. The academy has changed our lives for the better, and we have had the oppor- we had had, have the opportunities to help out our community through events and through donations, whether it's cans, shirts, or et cetera. We've also learned a lot of life skills such as professionalism, respect, and having pride within yourself, or how to do interviews, or just how to be amazing leaders in general, but not just for ourselves and our futures, but for each other so we can guide each other to the path of success. So, the last thing I want to say is just, you know, please don't shut down our program. Uh, we would want to give the same opportunities and experience to the future students down the road.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Maurice Habib. I'm from Impact SAC. And I'm very, very glad that I get to be here today. I'm seventeen years old, and I'm happy that I get to partake in making this decision. Um, I'm very saddened by the fact that we are considering this. Um, the police are risking their lives every single day to ensure our safety. So it's not fair that we have to, um, consider doing something like this to them because we should be making sure that they have enough funds to always be getting the proper training to better take care of us and our community. Um, I was also not thrilled with the argument of the police not ever being, going to be fit to take care of us. That is the same as making the argument of, well, everyone's going to be in poverty all the time. There's no reason to increase the minimum wage. And so I hope that you guys take this decision very seriously and that. and that you can listen to our voices today and that we're able to persuade you in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
...have enough funds to always be getting the proper training to better take care of us.
Caller, please turn down the device that you're watching the meeting. It's your turn to address the council.
...the police not ever being, going to be fit.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council. I'm a 30-year resident of District Two. I oppose any reduction in the police budget. District Two is a nightmare right now. While the rest of the city is enjoying a renaissance, we are not. The only people we can count on are police, fire, and ambulance. They show up when a man with an axe is smashing a gate down at 6:00 a.m. They show up when sideshows are spinning out right on our street. Thank you for forming a team to deal with this. Fire shows up weekly at Cal Expo. They put out the homeless fire, and then we choke down smoke and move inside. They also show up at Commerce Circle when an RV explodes, three in the last two months, and they are there to clean up the mess of the 208 RV fires that have occurred in the last year. Just last week, four people were shot at an illegal after-hours cannabis party outside of Berth and Beyond nonprofit, NRP Bid. In the last five months, this city has had 200 firearm-related assaults. We have one of the best police academies, yet we cannot retain officers. They get trained, and then they move on to Roseville. This is just not rocket scientist, not rocket science. We need to fund our police. They need more money. They don't need to be budget-cutted. It's just, I'm a big supporter of the police. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello. My name's Kayla. I'm with Impact SAC. I think, I believe that police should be, not be defunded, and we should fund them more because to get them better training and help cops be better, I think would help the Sacramento community a lot. Defunding them will only make it worse, and the crime rate is going to go up. And we're opening things, which also is going to make the crime rate go up. So I think cops are very needed right now.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello?
Welcome.
I can't, hello?
You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. Can I talk now?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Tamai Cornelius, and I represent SAC Impact. And I feel like, I feel like they should cut the police budget because there's funding needed in other places, like the educational system, low-income housing, and other things that need improving in our community. So I feel like they should cut the police's budget because we need the money for other things. It's not really, I don't feel like it's that important, not, no offense, but I don't really think it's that important for them to get paid as much as they do because we need money, we need the money for other things. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. As a resident and homeowner in District Two, I support the police and the Fire Department. No budget cuts for services. We need the police and the Fire Department. We weekly have issues with the fires, with RVs, and we also need the police. We have issues here in District Two, and they are needed to keep us safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello?
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, this is Mimi. I stay in South Sacramento. I'm a community activist. I do a lot with law enforcement, also with nonprofits. And the fact that they want to defund law enforcement, that's terrible. We need to look at the nonprofits that we have in the communities and how they are able to assist law enforcement. There's four right now that has mental health resources. And so we need to look at what our nonprofits are able to provide for them and go from there. Hello?
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, my name is Mimi, and I'm a community activist, and I also do a lot with law enforcement. And my idea about the whole thing, it's terrible. We need law enforcement. They also need the funding. And for them to improve, they need the proper resources. And that costs money. At the end of the day, when you look at all of our nonprofits that we have in our communities and how the nonprofits are able to assist law enforcement. For example, there's three of them that has mental health resources. There's a lot that we can do with those nonprofits. And utilizing those resources and helping law enforcement, that would be a lot better.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. I'm Kevin Ferrera, the Executive Director of the Sacramento Sierras Building and Construction Trades Council, and we support the budget proposed by the city manager and not the massive cuts to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Naggs. I'm the Vice President of Local 522, and I represent the professional, hard-working firefighters serving the city of Sacramento. I'm calling tonight to share our strong support of the Fire Chief's diversity outreach and recruitment proposal. Local 522 values further diversification of the Sacramento Fire Department and believes this proposal to be a very progressive step towards developing a more inclusive and equitable organization. We are especially encouraged to see the resurrection of the paramedic intern program. This program has proven historically successful in the development of a well-qualified and diverse candidate, many candidates, and is largely responsible for helping our SFD become the most diverse fire department in the Sacramento region. Though we encourage support of the Fire Chief's diversity outreach proposal, it is clear that the council is hesitant to appropriately fund the program. Instead, it has been suggested that the city should reduce the Fire Department's operating budget to cover the cost of program implementation. This is cause for concern, given the current growth of the city and the critical staffing issues plaguing the department. As you're aware, the city of Sacramento is one of, if not the fastest-growing city in the state. The city's population has grown over 25% since 2000, with the department currently providing fire and emergency medical services to well over 513,000 residents, excluding our mutually in contract response areas. Sacramento's growth rate has resulted in a 30% increase in fire department volume in just ten short years, with many of our response units running well over 4,500 calls for service annually. These proposed reductions to the Fire Department budget will only extenuate the effects of our rising call volume, our consistent staffing shortages, as well as our overtime demands. Our members are already working unprecedented hours of forced overtime with no relief in sight, relying on suppression positions to fill vital diversity and outreach needs.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
...additional delay. I urge you to take an honest look at the realities facing your Fire Department, and I ask you fully fund the much-needed diversity outreach.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Evan Minton. First, I want to assure some of the concerned callers tonight that there will be no cuts to the police budget. Despite the best and most current research and data available about what actually works to prevent and reduce violence and recidivism, we have a very police-first, anti-criminal justice reform mindset majority on our city council. A clue into what will happen tonight is that the mayor handed a significant portion of the meeting over to the police chief at a time when we're not even proposing cuts to the budget. In fact, we're proposing increases to their budget. In the past, this body has even bought the police an army tank, as well as ignored their own advisory commission's recommendations about how to, and senseless killings of Sacramentoans who are innocent. It's unfortunate that experts on the other side were not able to present data tonight, but it's also par for the course. Now's a great time to remind everyone that our city budget, not to mention our actions, are a reflection of our values. The aim of the People's Budget Sacramento is to ensure the approval of an equitable budget that reflects constituents' most urgent priorities. To date, the People's Budget Sacramento has surveyed nearly 4,000 people. Based on their responses, this is part of what they're asking for. To increase the funding for the Department of Community Response by $20 million, including $6.5 million for programmatic support to implement the citywide master plan for homelessness. Thank you for your championship of that, Mayor. To fund the creation of a small business ombudsman with $1 million, and the new office should be tasked with inclusive economic investment in small businesses owned and/or operated by people of color and women. And thirdly, to invest in the creation of a climate mobilization ombudsman to coordinate across city departments and operate retrofitting, weatherization, and building efficiency upgrade programs.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please? Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Teresa McConnell. Good evening, council members. I'm calling in support of the public, you know, the Fire and Police Chiefs' proposed budget without any cuts. I apologize for the dog. I just got outside to get out of the noise. I appreciate the Police Department so much in District Two. They are very responsive. We have so many issues over here, and as well as, I'm sure, the other districts too do as well. The fires have gone insane. The shootings have gone insane, and they have stepped up the plate regardless of all the other, and I don't know if it's just PD to defund the police right now, but we can't do that in Sacramento. Please don't let that be a pressure to you. We have had a record amount of funds come in through Sacramento with the pandemic. There have been people hurting because of the pandemic. Well, the city has gotten a lot of money due to the pandemic, and people have benefited from that, businesses. If you did the right thing, you know, it was the, it was nonprofits. It was the thing to be in Sacramento right now, this year. But please do not defund the police. Do not cut their budgets. Do not do that to the Fire Department. We just can't have that. We need their support. We need them in the communities. We need them to keep us safe. With that, I leave you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Fear-based rhetoric is all the police have. I'll just reiterate for clarity, not giving police a raise isn't defunding. That is Republican framing that our so-called Democratic council members are latching on to, much like the chief's presentation, which was fear-based. Police do not prevent crime. Please do not continue to defund our communities. Every time you send more of our tax dollars to police, you further defund our communities. Our parks suffer from lack of repair. Our pools suffer from the same. Library hours are cut short, or features which would help our children are cut or never implemented. Every time you choose to prioritize law enforcement over our communities, you hurt us, your constituents. Every time you hire another officer to the tune of a six-digit salary, you hurt us. Our budget and tax dollars are finite, and choosing to invest in one area means choosing to divest in another. Every year, you've chosen to divest and defund from our communities. You've shrunk our budget, let our roads fall into disrepair, and our communities have suffered at your hands as you choose to serve your donors over your constituents. All of your comments regarding reparations ring hollow in the face of a status quo spending plan, spending that is thoroughly uninspired and seeking equity, spending that criminalizes minority communities and overpolices them as a result, spending that chooses to invest in resources for well-off communities and instead chooses to invest in minority communities by overwhelmingly sending police there while community resources suffer. Your comments ring hollow in the face of your substantial body of at times violent policy that harms and kills the communities you just claimed to be concerned about. Your sad faces and solemn voices belie your violent policy which systematically defunds their communities. In that vein, terminate the contract with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department for prison labor on climate resiliency and environmental projects. This is slave labor. The city only pays the county's costs to supervise the work inmate crews, but does not pay anything for work performed by them. Levy maintenance is a common excuse for local law enforcement to perform sweeps, harass, and criminalize unhoused community members who don't have anywhere else to go. Stop combining important items as a way to limit public comment. It necessarily has the effect of limiting our free speech. And related to that, the county has started in-person public comment. I expect the city to follow suit.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah. The top 200 officers made an average of $258,000 per year in salary benefits.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, council. This is Rose Cabral from District Six, and I just wanted to get back to the first presentation we had this evening, the one where all of the council members voted to support the task force to develop reparations and support our communities of color. However, now, an hour and a half later, you are going to vote on a budget that goes in the direct opposition to that. You said those were just words, and it was important to take action. And now that you're about to take action, it seems that you are again potentially ignoring what communities of color and your constituents have been voicing for the past year plus. Those communities have been calling for investments in their communities with prevention and early intervention. The police chief said it takes 10 minutes for officers to respond. The crime is already way over by then. So why not invest in prevention so the crime doesn't happen in the first place? Also, I want to mention Chief Hahn's presentation made it sound like the city of Sacramento is a super-violent place to be. And any of my clients that are buying houses here, if they heard that presentation, they would probably not want to live here. So previous presentations, I heard the city of Sacramento crime rate is down. So I'd like to ask which it is. I also want to put a shout-out to my Sacramento neighbors. We are being pitted against one another by this making us afraid. They're trying to tell us that the programs we love are going to be cut, and they're trying to tell us that we're not safe. But I would like you to remember that we can have the programs that are focusing on prevention and intervention while cutting those that do not serve our community. The Fire Chief said they're going to cut the fire station in Oak Park. Of all the stations, that's the one that you're going to cut? I would like to see you cut flying the helicopter that circles for hours over a group of 20 people people standing on the street peacefully holding signs for Breonna Taylor.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I oppose the budget and ask that you remember the words that you promised to take action on earlier tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Steve Blanton. I'm Executive Director of the Power in Alliance, and our organization some weeks ago sent in a letter with our support for the police department at the budget as presented by the city manager. I'd just like to add that we view the work that the police do as essential to the welfare and to the safety of our community, for all members of our community. And I know in the Power in area, we've certainly had productive, courteous, and professional officers that have added to the neighborhood and that have supported businesses and have kept our areas safe. So, we would be in favor of continuing that in our area, and we just urge you to support the police department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, hi. I'm calling in support of, my name is Keon Bless, and I'm calling in from District Four, and I'm calling in support of People's Budget Sacramento's demands to reject all increases to the police department's budgets as we envision budget justice in the city and county of Sacramento where a community is meaningfully engaged in the development execution of annual budgets and support and service, not just those who are wealthy enough and have enough power. Really have to point out that a lot like, this is something that we have collected from over 1,500 people in the city and over 4,000 people within the county. We are demanding $15 million in participatory budgeting as opposed to the proposed $1 million because residents' voices need to be part of the budgeting process as much as possible. In order to ensure that is the case, the city should make an investment, not only in outreach, but by showing residents they're serious about being responsive to the community's most urgent funding needs. And we need to really look at these budgets as moral documents that are a reflection of our values and priorities as a community, not just those of us with the most money and investment in businesses. And to that end, there is a overwhelming, like, there is a number of people in the city that are calling for a reinvestment from SACPD's budget that dominates the $1.3 billion the city allocates, over a third of which go to this one department, and we're calling for a rejection of that, of any increases in that, considering the fact that in the last two years alone, Sacramento City taxpayers have paid at least $7.6 million in lawsuits for wrongfully harming and killing community members, more than enough to disqualify Sacramento police from any consideration of increased funding. And of course, we also have to look at the fact that they are costing in the last two years $30 million in overtime cost and close to $5 million just in 2021, despite the fact that most of us during the pandemic have been locked down.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. I really want to call out and say that nothing that from previous comments in support of the police budget has shown how police are actually using the funding.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Gitzal Cornejo, and I live in District Seven under Rick Jennings. Yeah, so I would like to, you know, address a couple of the comments that I heard earlier, you know, people from District Two, Del Paso Heights, and North Gate. And yeah, I was hearing about some RVs that were on fire, and yeah, I, that the police response, the police are used to respond to that first and foremost, but what I'm hearing is not a police problem, it's a, it's a moral problem, and it's where we seek to invest our funds going forward. So, our budget is supposed to represent where our values lie as a community, and what we want to invest in, we always have a choice to focus on that. And I would strongly encourage the, I would strongly encourage the council to vote to increase emergency housing assistance through rental assistance, and also invest into green affordable housing and shelters. We need to protect low-income workers and people that are at risk of being homeless. Too often, people that are in the city that are homeless often have, they're just priced out, they are evicted, they have nowhere else to go, and we need to invest into protecting our BIPOC trans sisters and brothers who are much more likely to be homeless and make this an equity issue, as you all were just talking about earlier with the recognition of the Reparations Act. And then, yeah, I'd like to talk about funding workforce development and public works matching because if we focused our funds, you know, on creating green jobs and really, you know, really investing in that, you know, to the tune of 10, 20 million, we would have jobs being created for people, green jobs, sustainable jobs for people throughout the city of Sacramento. And that's really what we want, right? Like, the root causes of crime are not, you know, differences of ideals, but it's
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, we need to invest in our community and not on the police.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Marnie, and I'm a homeowner and taxpayer in District Four. I'd like to take this opportunity to urge the council to pass the current budget as it has been laid out and to reject any potential budget cuts as of today. Sacramento Police Department still has not been able to return to the services and staffing levels that it was subjected to when we needed to do budget cuts due to the fact that the city didn't have enough money back in 2011. Luckily, Sacramento has been able to grow in more people, more major events, including the Doco, potentially the building of the MLS, the rail yards, et cetera. Unfortunately, it's also increased in the amount of homelessness, homeless people and the drain on our community that that is causing the taxpayers, the business owners in our community. As the capital, I understand that there's going to be many more demonstrations, and ignoring these events is not an option. It's irresponsible for the police department to not stand up and be present for these demonstrations and to think that we wouldn't be there to protect those that are demonstrating or those that are demonstrating against them would be completely irresponsible. I think it's important that we ensure that our officers are supported in the budget and that there is no decrease in the funding for the police department, as it would only serve to harm those in the city of Sacramento and those that are contributing to the livelihood of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, I'm calling as a Sacramento native and recent university graduate. I'm very concerned with the narrative being pushed by SACPD tonight. The fear-mongering around disinvestment from SACPD is illogical for many reasons. Firstly, proposing to cut initiatives and programs that support diversity efforts is a choice, one that is clearly aimed at stirring a reaction. Proposed budget cuts could instead go to the numerous military-grade weaponry SACPD obtains, salary increases, and excessive response to peaceful protests. Secondly, need I remind you, in the last two years, the city of Sacramento, SACPD has paid at least $7.6 million in lawsuits for wrongfully harming and killing your constituents. When a department makes an error of that magnitude, the logical thing to do is to hold them accountable and discipline them through budget cuts, not reward them with an $8 million budget increase. SACPD states that they are important to the community to protect us against rising rates of gun violence, yet they have failed to reduce gun violence rates and decrease crime rates. What sense does it make to continue investing in a failed tactic? Rather, the city needs to take on a new strategy and invest in community-based organizations to succeed, which means developing a long-term strategy and invest in community orgs far more than $1 million, which is less than 1% of the police budget. The city must demonstrate the same level of investment for community-based violence prevention and intervention and increase their budget. While we appreciate that the city is expanding its strategy to include community-based strategies, we ask that there be more transparency around how our tax dollars are being spent. In the future, we ask that the RFP process in the Office of Violence Prevention be explained in more transparency and that the city hold community budget hearings to discuss funding around issues that affect communities such as policing and gun violence reduction. I wholeheartedly support the People's Budget Sacramento's budget recommendations and ask that the city prioritize investing in community rather than failed strategies.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. If you will not hold them accountable and decrease their budget, at the very least, do not reward their abuses with an increased budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I was calling, I just wanted to kind of highlight what, actually ironically, Chief Hahn's PowerPoint highlighted for us and sort of really echoed what community activists and community members have been saying for a long time, that police do not keep us safe. The crimes that are cited as increasing in our communities are crimes that are directly related to lack of affordable housing, to lack of jobs that pay enough money to survive, to lack of mental health care. Those things are very, very highlighted, and Chief Hahn's reports and crime reports from police agencies across the country that are trying to make a case to get raises this year, even though provably they are not effective in protecting us. The tactic that Chief Hahn is using to threaten to take away programs for youth that he says himself are effective and has people calling in to say how effective they are is the tactic of abusers, to take away things that benefit the community when I live and have always lived in highly policed areas and know that the police do nothing, but respond to calls they are not equipped to handle. Mental health calls, they harass the homeless, they show up to help domestic or family disputes and throw their hands up because they cannot do anything about that either. They are there to protect businesses, as we have seen from people calling in. The, it is, Chief Hahn is not wanting to be accountable. What they could do is prioritize the calls, as departments have had to across the country when their people refuse to give them raises and demand to hold them accountable to actually do the work they say they are supposed to do. What you will have to do is stop harassing homeless people. You will have to stop showing up to mental health calls when you are not equipped to help the people that are needing the help.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
And you will have to be accountable. And you can, you can make it work within the budget, just like teachers.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Paris Dai, and I'm with Impact SAC. And regardless of what you have heard, we are located in District Four, that is Council Member Valensuela's district in the Ice Block of Sacramento. We've had a watch party with about 20 teens on the call. We were having trouble with them getting through and their phone disconnecting and stuff, but I just want to say that I am a parent representative on the Black Child Legacy Campaign Steering Committee, have been since its inception, and the parents that I speak to on a daily and regular basis, we are all in support of the current police budget being put forward. We are not in favor of any decreases in police or fire funding, and I have some other teens here with me to share their opinion.
Hi, I'm Kyla.
And I'm Yasmin.
And I have been working with Impact SAC for as long as I can remember, and every situation where Paris comes to me about somebody that's in danger, we always go to Chief Hahn, and him and his coworkers always help us out, so I also am not in favor in any police or fire defunding because they're the ones that help us when we need it.
Once again, I'm Yasmin. I 100% agree with everything Kyla says. We just discussed it, and, I mean, there's really no way to make our neighborhood safer by taking away our resources. I feel like maybe instead of taking away, maybe adding on to those resources in a different way would be a lot.
Thank you. Say thank you, girls. Thank you. You might have a few more teens on the call. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, as a lifetime resident, by lifetime, I mean 35 years of living in the city of Sacramento in District Seven, Eight, Two, Four, and Three, I have high, high-grade concerns about the rhetoric being pushed forward of how unsafe the city is and what the fear-mongering that we've heard from our police department. What we're not hearing enough about, and especially regarding our policing, is the overuse of overtime. $30 million of overtime expenditures last year alone. The city auditor's report that shows the misappropriations of funds, or let me correct that, the overuse of funds, that needs to be corrected. It's something that I hope this council takes into very serious consideration. When we look at the need for $15 million into youth investments, I'm also starting to hear that folks are more inclined to lift up the investments into our unhomed population of $40 million over the past few years versus recognizing since 2011, our homelessness rates have more than tripled. That's people who don't have homes, while we're advocating for folks who have six-figure salaries. I think the last thing that I, or one of the last things I want to highlight is that where public safety comes from is the investment before the problem, not responding to it. We need to have sound investments from our ARP funding, as well as general fund, into violence prevention programs that are equitably spread across Sacramento. There are folks that are receiving benefits from SACPD, great for those smaller communities, but we have a city-wide issue that needs to be addressed, and we can't wrest our way out of it. We have to have meaningful investment with community involvement in how those funds are appropriated. Lastly, but not least, firefighters also have an exorbitant cost on our system. When we look at the response to the EMS calls that are going out, we sit down a fire rig that has a battalion chief, a fire chief, as well as two to four firefighters on the call who are not needed for a medical emergency. Yes, we need EMS services, but those are literally half a million dollars less than what it takes to deploy a firefighting engine out there. We need to look at how we're spending our money, and instead of having our
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I can. I would like to support the People's Budget, proposed budget that's been lifted, and hope that this city council truly looks at a participatory budgeting model going forward.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I fully disagree with budget cuts in the police fund, and I think instead they should be double it to help train and better the officers and help better the community as the crime rate will go down if they are better. That is it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gerald. I live in District Eight, and I'm calling dealing with the budget. I support the budget, but I don't support the defunding of the police. I know our nation is in the throes of this big cry to defund the police, and maybe SAC wants to be recognized as woke, and I understand that. I do know that police have some hard work it has to do to deal with those individuals who are causing so much angst and stress and this outright bringing the police down, but to defund them at this time, I think, would be a big mistake. I know a lot of people like to say it's fear-mongering, but everybody has legitimate reason and legitimate concern. I have a legitimate concern that if, as you defund, listening to Chief Hahn's report, the loss of all these individuals, you're going to have a rise of militias, a rise of vigilante justice, of people filling in when the police are not there. So, it's more than just what was presented, there's so much more that we have to look at. So, I would, I definitely disagree with the defunding them. My concern is that if you take away that nine, take away the money, what you're going to do with the money? My suggestion is to hire EMTs, ambulances, because you're going to need them, because it's going to be a ride. There's going to be a ride. I don't care what anyone says, the criminal element is listening and watching and waiting. So, I would encourage us not to do this and to do our best to try to find ways. Some of the callers were saying that the police, police said, "Stop crime." That's right. That's, I mean, stop bad behavior. Well, that's right. It's not their job. Their job is the police. Their job, it's the job of the parents, the job of the community, the job of the people to help, help the police on that end. So, I definitely am in a disagreement with it. Part of disagree, I hope Councilmember Vang will hear, and understand this is not the best thing to do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, this is Tia Namaya-Dawson from Impact SAC, and we're on the side of defunding the police. I believe that the police do help in certain areas, but anybody can do what they do. They go to an academy, they don't go to college by doctors and teachers, and invest the time and money to get an education. They go to an academy for two years, and two years goes by very fast. My little cousin is about to turn two, and it feels like she was just born yesterday. So, an academy for police for two years, that's, they have nothing to lose. Two years go by so fast. So, I believe that they should be defunded and take those funds to other areas of the low-income community. And if you don't defund the police, I believe that you should train, pay to train people of the community, so if, like, I'll give an example, for people that live in Medeville, I think that you should train residents that lived in Medeville for five-plus years to police their own community. They will listen to police officers that are like them versus police officers that are from Roseville or from an area that are unfamiliar with. They're scared theirself, and they're trying to police us. They know nothing about us. I don't believe that's fair, and that's not right at all. Anyone can help, anyone can stop a crime, give them the right resources, too. So, I think you should defund the police, and if you don't, police people of that area, that grew up in that area, that went to school in that area, who has family in that area, because the police are not doing what they're supposed to do, clearly. I could name all the incidents that have happened. I I I can name all the incidents that didn't happen and the police did not take the right measures. But they go through a two-year academy. It doesn't make sense. Defund the police. That's all I have today.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
You know, from what I've heard tonight, I gotta say, this is, from what I heard from Chief Hahn, this has got to be the biggest, thickest slice of bullshit propaganda that I have ever heard. And I really gotta say, what I'm hearing from like from people calling in from Impact SAC, clearly Chief Hahn and Dar- and Daryl Steinberg obviously made like recruited these people to call in and support of that. And it is kind of disgusting to see the manipulation of youth being going on right now. Now, that said, nobody I've heard yet has said we're cutting the shit or we're defunding the police. In fact, they're still the largest department funded in the one-point-three-billion-dollar budget in SAC PD. But more importantly than that, we're just talking about shifting dollars to community needs, community care needs and that people actually need, like emergency housing or like mental health crisis alternatives that doesn't involve law enforcement. In fact, just by shifting dollars from the police department, SAC PD's department, even just a two percent decrease or three-point-one million dollars could support many other health professional positions such as seventy-three behavioral health peer specialists, or sixty mental health workers, or forty-five social workers, or seventy-six EMTs, or sixty-three paramedics. You could do that with just a two percent decrease and all the community has been asking for is that you not increase SAC PD's budget by ten million. And here is Chief Hahn literally lying through his teeth at you and scaring the public, trying to say that you won't have police if you even don't, if you don't even increase it by ten million. Are you fucking kidding me right now?
Oh, come on. Stop the cussing.
I have heard in a long time, and I've heard a lot.
Stop it.
So.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We need to actually invest in community care needs and that isn't much to ask.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'm Gretta Lichin. I'm a resident and property owner in District Three and I'm president of the River District Board. Last week at our board meeting, we heard some shocking numbers on crime in the River District, both when compared to the rolling average in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty. Robbery, up thirty-five percent. Assault, up seventy-seven percent. Motor vehicle theft, up fifty percent. Business burglary, up forty-six percent. And rape, up four hundred percent. And we are not alone. Crime is up citywide. Businesses are already struggling to emerge from a devastating year. This is not the time to reduce funding for public safety. We ask that you join us, other business leagues and districts, to support the adoption of the budget as prepared by the city manager without any reduction to the Sacramento Police Department budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
My name is Lucero Soto. I live in District Six and I am a member of Sacramento AS. As a multi-faith organization, our shared faith values compel us to fight for a just and fair community for all. Some of the issues that are deeply concerning include the city continuously investing hundreds of millions of dollars in law enforcement over the years. We need to see the same level of investment in our community-based organizations that are committed to serving our most vulnerable communities. For decades, for decades, the city has attempted to solve issues in our communities through punitive measures centered around law enforcement and incarceration. It is very clear that these solutions are not working. It is not decreasing crime or incarceration rates. They do not address the root causes. It's time to take an alternative approach and pri- prioritize resortive justice options that center healing and trauma-informed care. Last month, the city approved an eight-million increase to Sacramento PD's budget, totaling totaling around one hundred and sixty-four million, while proposing a mere one million be divided among six community-based organizations addressing gun violence. While we appreciate that the city is expanding the strategy to include community-based strategies, we ask that there be more transparency around how our talk tax dollars are being spent. In the future, we ask that the RFP process be explained in more transparency and that the city hold more community budget hearings to discuss the following issues around what affects our community. We ask that you consider our request with Sacramento's best interest at heart. We are watching and expecting you to do is what is right. Please defund the police. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a clinical psychologist and I'm a resident of District Seven. The definition of fear mongering is the action of deliberately arousing public fear or alarm about a particular issue. And this was well illustrated in Chief Hahn's presentation, as well as by those who called in to echo his sentiments. It's alarming to me that someone in such a powerful position would employ this tactic at this time, preying on people's mental health and vulnerabilities to desperately cling to dollars. Now, the proposed budget for SAC PD is negligible in comparison to the overall budget proposed by the city. Calling to increase their budget to an all-time high of almost one hundred and sixty-six million despite the creation of the Department of Community Response, which actually shifts certain duties away from the police? If duties are being shifted away, then it makes sense that funds would be shifted as well. So why have we become so comfortable with giving police so much money and power? Why have we confused what we think makes us feel safe is actually something that's just familiar? Why aren't we questioning that? Now, I get everyone has concerns about public safety, but who says increasing the police budget's going to increase that? If we have such very high rates of violent crime, that tells me that the current police situation's not helping to rectify that. If they've seized six hundred and eighty-five firearms this year, that means six hundred and eighty-five firearms were already on the streets. They didn't stop that. When is enough enough? Public safety is not about policing. It's about access to quality, fair housing, quality food, safe and clean community spaces, healthcare services, including mental health care, and workforce and economic development. If these services were prioritized appropriately.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Sure can. We may not see those crime stats or the overtime excess that Chief Hahn has referenced. I support the people's budget.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, council members and Mayor Steinberg. We are Dennis and Kelly O'Sullivan, parents of fallen Sacramento Police Officer Tara O'Sullivan and of Watch Six, nineteen-nineteen, and the adopted parents of the entire Sacramento Police Department. Although we do not live in Sacramento, our family lives and works there, and we are so grateful to the members of this council who understand the risks that our officers take every day and how the same council members support the department and Tara's family. We understand that you're all having to clear up a mess that you did not create. When funding for basic health services and other services were cut so many years ago, it created the disaster you are dealing with today. We would like you to know that we appreciate the wisdom and the courage of the members of the council who understand that cutting funds to the Sacramento Police Department will only bring more disastrous results for the entire Sacramento community for many years to come. By taking a stand today to protect and fund appropriately the very department that upholds the laws and keeps chaos at bay, you are proving, excuse me, you are proving that politics is not a game and lives are on the line worth fighting for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, this is Holly from with Impact SAC. And I don't think you guys should defund the police because I support Chief Hahn and his ideas.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting, caller. You have two minutes to address the council.
I'm a taxpaying black woman in this community, and my lived experience has been that our law enforcement does not protect or serve me. In fact, they have gone the complete opposite throughout my life. To continue to give so much of my tax dollars to this agency that's working against me and my community, instead of working to use my money to actually make my community stronger and safer, is beyond a travesty. I'm so tired of our elected officials making all of these proclamations but not actually using the money for policies and services that we so desperately need. If you really want to acknowledge and start to repair the harm done to the black community like you just said earlier in this very meeting, then you need to show us by not continuing to increase the police's budget and instead investing in the services that will prevent my community from needing to be overpoliced in the first place. You guys have the opportunity to be on the right side of history here, to save lives, to start positive changes for generations to come, listen to the community, and end overpolicing. How many more lives have to be lost? Like Donald Venable and Gabby Navarez and Stefan Clark and Robert Coleman and Adam Lund and Maurice Holly and Justin Prescott and Jeremy Southern and Eduardo Reyes and Matt Coats and Louise Diaz and Roberto Leon and Adrian Jamar and Justin Prescott and Daisy Onfrenow and Servay Marquino and Jesse Adaway and Jason King and Logan Augustine and Daniel Lardos and Nolan Cornet and Thomas Littlecloud and Eric Allnert. It's time that you vote like your ethics should tell you to and stop giving more money to law enforcement that is literally taking our lives and making our communities less safe. End overpolicing. Use our tax dollars where they really need to go, for services that stop us from needing to call the police in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. You have two minutes to address the council. Please proceed.
Tell me when.
Caller, please start.
Thank you, um Mr. Mayor and City Council for allowing me to address you as a body. My name is Jay King and I reside in both Districts Two and Seven. And I urge you to support the budget as it stands. I believe Chief Hahn is doing an outstanding job working to keep our communities and city safe under dire circumstances. We're watching the overhauling and reform of our police department right before our very eyes without it having to be called out. Chief Hahn holds the unfortunate position of being judged by the past tactics and behaviors of SAC PD without any consideration of the great changes he's made when it comes to transparency and better police-community relations. As a lifelong resident in Sacramento, we've never seen a better chief, someone more dedicated to our community, and quite honestly, someone not politically motivated, but earnestly motivated by his love for the city. So I ask you all to support this budget and let's make our city great, continue to make it great. And I thank you, council and mayor, for your good work.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, um I've been following this situation with the demands, the budget increases from SAC PD and it's just insulting. We've got so much going on in the city and especially Chief Hahn's current comments about not doing the youth programs, which are laughable, and saying that they're not going to respond to calls. We just, we just don't need those guys. On Saturday, they failed to arrest a single Proud Boy gang member when they committed multiple assaults in broad daylight in Sacramento. They failed to make any arrests when they came and assaulted people on tape and vandalized the Breonna Taylor Memorial. They were standing around goofing off, hanging out with white supremacist gang members in broad daylight at a at the insurrectionist rally, like literally an insurrectionist rally. And the only thing they seem to care about strongly is getting more money for themselves. I cannot remember a time when the SAC PD took a public stance for anything that benefited the community. And a lot of those guys are saying that they'll walk if they don't get what they want and I'd love to see it. I'm remodeling a bathroom right now. I've been working since about seven-thirty this morning and I'm going to be working till about eleven o'clock tonight. And I don't think those guys can hack it in my world. I don't think those guys can hack it in the world without crazy benefits that nobody else gets and salaries that are guaranteed and lawyers to protect them when something goes wrong. In my business, if something goes wrong, I'm just screwed. Like I'm just screwed. And maybe my insurance will cover it, maybe it won't. Those guys think they want to be in my economy that bad, I'd like to see them come into my economy. So in short, there is absolutely nothing about Hahn's proposals and requests that indicate that SAC PD is going to start taking white supremacy seriously.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely no more money for SAC PD and those cops are welcome to join the workforce if they think they can hack it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
I'm sorry, what?
You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, um my name is Jennifer Lorette Demola. Um over and over, SAC PD and the CHP have met protesters with overwhelming force, chasing roughly twenty-five college students and moms around the streets surrounding the Capitol despite almost entirely nonviolent, an almost entirely nonviolent year of protesting nearly every night. This is the core of the budget increase request. They want you to believe the narrative that our community would be safer as a police state with highly militarized police force. A militarized commu- community where people with badges and guns respond to everything. What kind of community do the people of Sacramento want? We want one where citizens feel both safe and empowered. Funding more police leads to an increased police state. Transferring those funds to our communities gives us power to deal with our own issues while keeping police active for the most vital issues, only the most vital. We need to bring our communities back into power. We need to find community organizations that keep us safe with people from our communities that know us. Police need to be there for emergencies, not a part of everyday life. And they certainly don't need to be turned against us when we try to march for what we believe in. I'm a single mother of two disabled children. My son is almost, my son is fourteen and he's almost six feet tall. One of my fears is that one day he'll be forced to play a game, as Simon says, with highly armed police who have no idea why he can't understand them and respond as and as demanded as quickly as they would like. And armed police forces by nature are ableist and dangerous to citizens who struggle to I urge the council to reduce funding for the police and give it to the community so that we can um increase funding for programs that that actually help the community and don't.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Tibbs. I am an attorney, a mother, and a homeowner in District Six. I'm calling tonight to voice my support for the proposals outlined in the People's Budget. I urge the council to please consider to cutting the Sacramento Police Department's budget. I urge the council to please consider to cutting the Sacramento Police Department's budget by no less than thirty million to restore the department to the 2019-2020 spending level. I'd like to see the council committing to another decrease next year, and the year after that, and the year after that. For the past year, I've personally observed how the excesses and overreach of the Sacramento Police Department harm black and brown Sacramento, including in protests in the streets, while the council fails to appropriately fund community-based resources. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
I've heard many people tonight say that they want police to public safety as businesses open up and help with homelessness. We know what they're really saying. In our social contact, the state has the monopoly on the use of force, and in Sacramento and many other jurisdictions, of course, is the police. So what they're saying is that, that we should use state violence to move people out of different areas. And yes, in this case, it'll be primarily poor and disproportionately black people out of their communities. As someone who's worked with law enforcement across the nation and internationally, I've heard law enforcement say that they can't arrest our way through this or out of this situation, or don't want to be social workers, and I agree. And many other callers on this tonight agree. So we're at an inflection point, or the city's at an inflection point. And it's now another place where we can decide what sort of city and social contract you want and we want. So I encourage you to move the money to services that can actually address upstream factors. You know, if you really want to enforce something, I would encourage the city to enforce legal laws and investigate business owners that overserve already intoxicated patrons or serve underage people who are then more likely with alcohol, and who are then more likely to commit violence and drive drunk, and address other social factors. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm calling to oppose the proposed budget and to support the People's Budget Sacramento. The entire presentation by Chief Hahn just highlighted the need for funds to be removed from the police budget and put into community services and programs that will prevent crime and that will help people. All of the things that he noted are currently not working. All of the money that is currently being poured into the police department and the programs that he noted are not working. That is why all of these people are calling in stating that they feel unsafe. And that is, even the people that are calling in support of the police department are saying things that show that the police department isn't effective and it's not working in the form that it currently is. Defund the police. Put the money into the people, into the communities, and into services that will prevent crime. And it makes sense that if the police are not doing what they should be with the money that they're getting, that putting more money into it isn't going to make it better. Because everything, every dollar that's already being put into it is being wasted, clearly. So why give them more? Defund the police, and fuck Chief Hahn.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I've been working in Sacramento for the past two years, and I'm calling in tonight just to note briefly how disheartened and honestly a little embarrassed I am that the city has done so little to reimagine public safety in the we, in the wake of a full year of this current movement for racial justice. And that this current budget just doesn't reflect that at all. And I've been working with people involved in the criminal justice system for two years now, and because of their mental health symptoms in, in particular, it's obvious to me that police and incarceration are not appropriate tools for addressing mental health and addiction. I just urge you, please, to invest the money that would go into police budgets. Instead, to please bolster residential access to mental health and substance abuse diversion programs and inpatient treatment instead of just warehousing more and more of our community in jail. So my demand is please invest fifteen million into participatory budgeting as opposed to just one million. To please cut the police budget by no less than thirty-point-five million dollars to restore the department to the 2019-2020 spending level, and to commit to continuing to decrease that budget. And lastly, to reallocate funds for the enforcement of city code and traffic violations into something outside of the police department, so that we're not responding to code violations, to mental health crises with armed police officers. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, this is Chet, District One. It seems to me tonight you've been approached by two sets of people. Those asking for equity, asking for you to remain true to your words regarding reparations, which align with those seeking community funding, and those who wouldn't, who buy into the status quo, who prefer to spend out of fear rather than a place of equity and wanting data that proves that methods are effective when they are used. Police aren't effective. Police don't end crime. Police don't stop crime. Police respond to crime and maybe catch it while it's occurring. They don't act as a deterrent because the cause of crime remains. Poverty and historical disenfranchisement of entire communities. How about we don't let these systems which don't work get grandfathered in? Recently, SACPD posted a graphic which showed number of police officers per thousand citizens, and there was zero correlation between that and how much crime occurred. The reality is, when funding is removed from communities, communities suffer, especially historically disenfranchised communities. When that money then goes to police and the carceral system, it tends to overpolice those same defunded communities. Police and sheriff have been grandfathered in without evidence of their efficacy. All Republicans should be one hundred percent behind metrics which show actual data, proof of the efficacy of the programs being administered, rather than administering through fear of some unknown scary criminal that might happen once in a blue moon but is by no means the norm. We need evidence of the efficacy of a solution, especially one that we are funding to the tune of one hundred and sixty million dollars, while communities suffer, while the communities you claim to care about suffer. The situation as it exists right now anticipates crime never-ending. I don't know about y'all, but for the City Council, police unions donate to a lot of those council members. As a result, council members tend to buy into the propaganda that police people should be afraid and that there's rampant criminals everywhere, because that sounds better than saying, hey, we give the police so much money that we can't help the poor, and as a result, the poor have to turn to crime. Oh, and by the way, we are shutting down your library, and we're limiting the hours on all the public facilities, all because we have to feed into the narrative that you should be terrified because of rampant criminals that are just criminals for the sake of being criminals.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Help solve the causes of crime with an evidence-based approach that invests in communities.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you to the council. My name is Mark Reichel. I'm sixty years old. I live in East Sacramento, and I have an office downtown Sacramento. I'm an attorney, and I live in District Three. I've been an attorney for thirty years in Sacramento, doing primarily criminal defense in that time. And I've, I'm a keen observer of Sacramento city politics. And I can assure you that in my time, I've seen that simply throwing more money to the police department isn't going to do anything to make any of us feel safer. We have enough police. They have enough funding, in fact, more than enough. But in Sacramento, there are really good professional agencies with great trained professionals who make a career out of this and wanted to do this their whole life, got educated, and got a degree. And now they're working for agencies that cry out for adequate, not just excess or increased funding, simply adequate funding, and these well-trained people want to provide support to survivors of crime, survivors of medical catastrophes, life misfortunes, and they're those that are addicted to drugs. These professionals can actually help find healing and justice in Sacramento. And that's completely separate and apart from the police department. But again, I will tell you, we just can't keep throwing money at police budgets. I will tell you that a simple inquiry shows the large number of major cities comparable to Sacramento that have in fact done this redistribution with a net gain of an increase in quality of life. Austin, Texas, in the heart of Texas, preaches nationwide to other cities to do what they did, which would substantially cut the police budget, redistribute that money, those precious resources. And things got much better. Crime went down. People are happier. It's a better place to live. I'd like to see more affordable housing, parks, libraries, transportation. But when you increase funding like this to the police department, communities of color that have traditionally been hurt by cuts to their services and increase to police funding.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you. Do the right thing. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I just wanted to comment, listening to some of the people that are so, that are calling in in support of giving more money to Chief Hahn and the police department. I'm hearing so much fear in their voices. And from, as, as an abolitionist and somebody who has definitely became more of a believer in complete abolition and not reform, especially throughout the summer, and watching SACPD and other law enforcement agencies just shoot people and abuse them and abuse their authority and suck up overtime and community resources and, and promote propaganda, putting fear into people who, the same people who were protesting overpolicing of them when they want, when there were mask mandates, or their children playing, or, you know, having to stay inside their homes. These are people that, that understand the harm of, of being constantly monitored, of the fear of going out. They understand how detrimental it is to be kept in a, in a small space or in an emphyseis space for a period of time. Yet they want to fund systems that put people in situations that, that put them into jail cells and that take them away from their community, and that constantly have them paranoid that they are going to be stopped for something that is not, that is not a crime, and, but yet the police will find something. And these are things that people, that I know all people, even these business owners that are calling in, understand. And the fact that they don't put it into the same perspective and want to invest in things that provably harm people is, just seems counterproductive and counterintuitive to me. And I just really, also, the irony of Steinberg acknowledging reparations for, for, for committee members and, and then still choosing to have this conversation when the people that, when the people that
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Are calling in and telling you, when we are calling you and telling you what we need to make our communities better.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hey, my name is Stevie Cook, and I am a resident of District Six. And I'm calling in to comment to tell you that I, I don't want you to spend any more money expanding the police budget. I'm, I'm requesting that you decrease the law enforcement budget by thirty-point-five million and that you allocate these monies to the critical support services that community members actually need to improve their lives. We need preventative services, services that center the actual public good, like access to housing, alternatives to 911, mental health care, right? Things that actually serve the people. We need care, not cops. Care, not cops. That should be the full budgeting priority of members of this council. It is egregious to consider increasing SACPD's allocations when we ha, we know that over the last two years, cops have cost taxpayers at least eight-point-two million in misconduct settlements. That's a full doubling of preventable fines in just one year. From two million, two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars in 2019 to five million, nine-hundred-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five in 2020. You condone this malfeasance when you increase their budget and should be ashamed of having to shell out taxpayer dollars to cover your asses for abusive law enforcement officers. Make amends. Begin to make those actual reparations. Decrease the budget by thirty-point-five million and truly start to serve the people, not the white supremacist system that holds the people in harm's way. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm calling to support the People's Budget and to completely support defunding and cutting SACPD. Not only do y'all need to be defunded, you need to be abolished in the first place. I find it extremely disgusting that Chief Hahn mobilized this child cult called Impact SAC to blow up these phone lines and act like all these black youths support the police when we don't. I also find it extremely disgusting that Daniel Hahn showed straight-up propaganda and fear-mongering in the earlier presentation. Police do not stop crime. Despite what these Karens are calling in saying they don't stop crime, they don't prevent crime, and increasing the budget will not keep you any safer. This is exactly why people mobilize in front of your home, Mr. Mayor. You have blood, you have unhoused blood on your hands. You're going to police people for cussing? Really? As you're going to sit here and talk on giving my people reparations, and then you're going to put money into the people that terrorize us? This is the most political politician shit I've ever seen in my life, and you guys should be damn shamed of mobilizing children to further your political bootlicking-ass agenda. Fuck your bald-headed ass, and this is exactly why I will be in front of your home, once again, to fuck up your house. Fuck you, bald bitch.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm a member of the People's Budget Sacramento, and we envision budget justice for the city of Sacramento. Budget justice mean, is meaningfully, meaningfully engages the entire community in the development and execution of the budget and prioritizes support and service to those who are most impacted by inequity to ensure the approval of an equity budget, where everyone is served according to their need. Our city budget is a reflection of those values, and the current budget as proposed prioritizes law enforcement. This is not in alignment with the values of the community the city serves. Over, or, sorry, nearly four thousand residents have taken the survey, myself being one of them. And that data shows that constituents overwhelmingly want increased funding for health and human services, community-based resources, housing, and reimagined public safety that does not involve the police. Given that, looking at the current budget, we would like some changes to be made. We would like investment of fifteen million into participatory budgeting as opposed to proposed one million. We also are asking that any proposed increases to the Sacramento Police Department's budget be rejected. We'd ask that the Sacramento Police Department's budget be cut by no less than thirty-point-five million dollars to restore the department to the 2019-2020 spending level and commit to another decrease next year. This makes sense and is necessary, given the shift of many responsibilities to the Department of Community Response and other alternatives. Given that, we think that the Department of Community Response should receive an increase of funding by twenty million, including six-point-five million for programmatic support to implement the citywide master plan for homelessness. The current figure proposed by the city is only three-point-five million.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please? Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Crystal Sanchez, and I'm with the Sacramento Homeless Union. And my biggest question here is, when are we going to stop putting Band-Aids on bleed-out situations? In June of 2020, Chief Hahn made the statement that he no longer wanted to be involved in homeless services, mental health, and the mayor took a knee, you know, denouncing white supremacy. However, we're continuing to create programs, and we're continuing to invest in the police department in which we are denouncing and trying to take away from, and creating other services like the community response. I'm here today to ask that you invest the twenty million dollars in the community response. As somebody who's on the ground, working closely with Bridget, I am watching this council repeatedly put things on top of her. You guys are putting youth services, violence prevention, 311, homeless services, and again, not funding. What were these programs to be successful if we're continuing to fund the police department? With the police op, or with Chief Hahn's presentation, the Impact Team at this point. The Impact Team is there to resource our unhoused community. They're no longer resourcing the unhoused community. So that's eight officers right there. Again, we just need to start investing in in this community, and I agree with People's Budget all the way around. We do not need more police. We need more community services, or we will continue to see homelessness, we will continue to see violence. We need to invest in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm calling to address the council, to ask you guys to please not invest more money into our police department. Please don't invest more money into criminalizing mental health. Please invest this money instead into things that our community actually needs. Amid the ongoing epidemic of police killing, killing and unarmed people of color, a national reckoning for police accountability, the mayor and the city council publicly called for independent investigation into the Sacramento Police Department's disproportionately violent, violent response to anti-racist protests since the murder of George Floyd. An investigation has yet to be started, much less completed. Any consideration of increasing the department's budget before an investigation is complete is injustice. Please do not add three, thirty million dollars into our police department. Community members have been calling for you to defund the police department for more than a year now. I don't understand why we even have to have these conversations. Please don't insult our intelligence by putting money into things that are gonna be killing us. We've already come now to this pandemic. People are suffering, people are dying. We need these resources into programs and people that are actually gonna do things for us, and the police is not that. They've proved that time and time again. Please do not give SACPD more money. Include, take off more than thirty thousand. Defund the police. Give these resources to our community. You guys know what's right. You guys have been in the streets and been saying this. Do what's right.
Thank you for your comments. No, next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Nancy Kitts, and I'm calling to support the proposed funding for police and fire. Chief Han described the increase in crime over the past year with murder rates up. Law enforcement officials and criminologists say that the pandemic stress and a police pullback amid protests have been likely contributors. It's hard to imagine that we're having this discussion now about defunding the police. One year after the move to defund law enforcement, many American cities are now restoring money to their departments or proposing to spend more. In New York City, the mayor said he would reinstate ninety-two million dollars for a new precinct after scrapping the project last summer. The mayor of Baltimore, who led efforts as a city councilman to cut the police budget by twenty-two million last year, recently proposed a twenty-seven million increase. After tax on Asian Americans and a rise in homicides in Oakland, California, city lawmakers in April restored three point three million of the twenty-nine million in police cuts, and the mayor is now proposing to increase the department's budget by twenty-four million. Los Angeles's mayor has proposed an increase of about fifty million after the city cut its police department last year. Defunding public safety at this time would be a reckless decision with potentially serious consequences for city residents. Please support the current budget as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. Hello, my name is Meche Venerable. I'm a concerned community member, and I'm the daughter of Donald Venerable, which I hope is a name that sounds familiar. And if you don't know, on February ninth, two thousand and one, Donald Venerable called your beloved police department for help, and in return, he was murdered for holding a cellphone that was mistaken for a gun. And so now, that was twenty years ago, and since then, my family has actually fought for reform. And twenty years later, we are still experiencing a lot of violence in the community and abuse of power from police departments, especially Sacramento Police Department. And the city of Sacramento is definitely responsible for murdering my father, and it would really be a shame if y'all turned around and increased the police budget while understanding the harm and fear and violence that they have caused to the community, and especially communities of color, and especially the black community. And with that, I, I obviously really urge this body to allocate those funds directly into the community and out of the hands of the police department, who is, again, responsible for a lot of violence within the black community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is, I don't know if you guys can hear me, it sounds very quiet. My name is Dr. Sarah Aga Mohamady, and I live in the sixth congressional district. I am an ICU physician at UC Davis Medical Center. And specifically regarding item twenty-three, what I wanted to bring up was my deep concern for the lack of funding that is being given to the community response team, and how much funding is actually going to the Sacramento Police Department. In the last year, as a physician, as a resident in Midtown, I have unfortunately witnessed the worst of the effects of the pandemic, both in terms of the patients I've had to take care of, the homeless situation in Midtown, which has exponentially worsened, at least within the last year, and as well as the lack of resources for mental health and appropriate resources for the community that does not have access to proper mental health or medical services. And the fact that more money is not being given to this in order to create resources where it's actually needed, as a physician, is quite frankly, very offensive, as well as very disheartening. And if there's nothing that we have learned from this last year, is that human kindness and compassion was extremely lacking, and came with a very high death toll. So my, I am pleading with the city council to reconsider the distribution of funding. I have seen horrible crimes committed as, and not appropriate response from the police, unfortunately. And unfortunately, this then becomes a huge burden onto the community, and we cannot even take pride in where we live, because we want to be able to help people, and yet we don't have the resources to be able to do so. So I sincerely and I earnestly ask you all to please consider redirecting funding, not on the order of a couple, a couple million dollars. There are tens of millions of dollars that can be given.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Nope, that's basically it. I think orders of tens of millions of dollars need to go towards community resources and not to the police.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I just wanted to, I'm a resident of District Four. I just wanted to point out that globally, if you look at everyone in the world who is incarcerated, nine percent of them are black Americans. That's a group that makes up one-half of one percent of the global population, and is represented at eighteen times their proportionate amount in prison. The legal system in this country was built to do this. It was built specifically to do this, and when we contribute to increasing police funding, that's what we're contributing to. If we lived in a different country and we're looking at this, we would call that apartheid. That's what we're contributing to when we increase police funding, knowing what caused this system. When, the reason that we're in this situation right now is because we are funding state violence against the people instead of services for the people. So I want the city council to consider that when they are voting for this increase on police funding. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Defund the police and refund the people. Support the People's Budget Sacramento and meet their demands. We need to take money from the police and fund unhoused outreach, affordable housing, youth services and programs, mental health services, community enrichment programs and services, small business funding and support, and programs that support and uplift our black, brown, and underrepresented populations. Police don't create or maintain safety, and they don't prevent or stop crime. Police don't create community or foster trust and growth. It's interesting that those that support the police so wholeheartedly are so obviously living in a constant irrational fear. It's as though, deep down, they know the cops don't actually keep them safe. That's why so many tonight have told us they live in fear. I'm an abolitionist, and I don't live in fear, because I know that the community keeps us safe and not the cops. Defund the police and refund the people, fund the community, and let the community do what it does and keep each other safe.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hey, everyone. I'm Anthony from District Two. A different world can exist, but a different world requires courage. Courage to imagine how we can address crime before it occurs, not a reactive approach, but proactive. Crime occurs because resources are lacking. Resources are lacking because we've defunded communities to the tune of billions of dollars across this country for over a hundred years. We've criminalized the poor rather than addressing their needs, rather than investing in historically disenfranchised communities. Here is a quote from MLK from a Birmingham jail. It encompasses many of you and your views towards the status quo. He says, "I must make two honest confessions to you, my Christian and Jewish brothers. First, I must confess that over the past two years, I have been gravely disappointed with the white moderate. I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that there, the, the black man's greatest stumbling block in his stride towards freedom is not the white citizen's counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension, to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice, who constantly says, 'I agree with you in the goal you seek, but I cannot agree with your methods of direct action,' who paternalistically believes he can set the timetable for another man's freedom, who lives by a mythical concept of time and who can constantly advises the black man to wait for a more convenient season. Shallow understanding from people of goodwill is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people of ill will. Lucewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection. Do the same status quo funding, and you're the white moderate he talks about. More interested in peace and quiet than actual justice. More interested in saving yourselves and perceptions of law and order rather than actual law and order brought about through community investment. Maybe stop giving into fear and imagine a new paradigm that imagines the complete period of crisis."
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I can imagine a world where occasionally things might happen, but most are headed off to robust community investment.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Next caller, please. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting, caller. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, hi, I'm Ardea Sala, and I'm Measure U District Three representative, and I'm calling to urge you to support the recommendations from the Measure U Committee to fund fifteen million dollars for participatory budgeting. And after hearing all of this discussion and the community really asking you to think about investing money into community, this is one way to invest directly in the community and engage the community. As, as you can, as you're experiencing right now, the community cares, and they want to have a say in how their tax dollars are being spent. Participatory budgeting will allow for that to happen. And I know there's concern about not having the final say in how that money is spent, but I, I know our community, and whatever project they come up with, and whatever solution they come up with, to utilize that fifteen million, it will definitely be aligned with your goals and the goals of the community. And after hearing all the comments, there is no possible way that you cannot accept and, and fund the fifteen million dollar recommendation. That's a basic, it, it's a very small percentage of the overall budget, and it's a basic fundamental goal of budget, participatory budgeting, including and collaborating with the community and listening to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, I'm a community member from District Four. I'm shocked that we're even having this conversation after this last year. We shouldn't have to discuss the possibility of the police budget increasing. We should be discussing how to reinvest their existing budget into addressing the root cause of many of the issues our community is facing. Exacerbated by the pandemic, we have significant needs in housing, health, youth programming, health services, and parks, all of which do not and should not live in the police department. There are trained professionals that work in these fields outside of the police department that are equipped to serve these important areas. We heard at the beginning of the meeting about reparations. Katie Valenzuela indicated that we should now see action in order to trust that the city takes this resolution seriously. I think a good first action to take, city council members, would be to reject any increase in Sacramento Police's one hundred fifty-seven million dollar budget, followed by a move to reduce it back to twenty nineteen budget levels, so that we can increase the funding for critical areas such as the Department of Community Response. If you're shifting responsibility from SACPD to this new department to address huge issues like homelessness and mental health crises, the funding needs to shift with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you to the members of the public for taking the time to call in and express your opinion on very important issues. I'm gonna turn this now over to the city council for discussion and potential action.
Mayor, this is the city attorney. May I make a report out from closed session? I, I hate to interrupt.
Is it necessary?
It's necessary to report out, Mayor, and I know that this meeting is probably gonna go much longer, so it's just be very quick. The city council met in closed session today pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D four to discuss matters pertaining to the initiation of litigation. City council authorized the city attorney to initiate litigation, and the particulars of that litigation will be disclosed to anyone once the action has been filed. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, back to the budget, please. Members, I have my participant screen up here, and I don't see any of the members who were up, but I know that can't be the case. So who is, who is first? I see Councilmember Harris. Go ahead.
So Mayor, you know, we've been deliberating over this budget for a while. We have American response, American Rescue Plan funds coming, which afford us many opportunities to fund a lot of initiatives regarding homelessness, in direct investments in community and small business. Granted, they're one-time funds, but given the situations that we find ourselves in, you know, currently in our communities, I think that the managers proposed you know, currently in our communities, I think that the manager's proposed budget is a good one. And I would like to move that we accept it as it is without defunding anything from either the police or the fire budget. There are certainly discussions that need to be had moving forward. You know, for instance, I, as you know, I've long sided with the fire chief looking for a two-tiered system and a better method of emergency medical response. I think we can get there. The discussion is open and there are possibilities ahead, but given where our city is at, you know, I think about the current state of crime, certainly in District Three, the number of guns that the police have taken off the streets and what those guns represent, which is a lot of violence of people against people. I think it would be very unwise to take anything away from the police budget at this point. I also think that to get the diversity that this council really wanted to achieve in the fire department, that we have to invest in that program. You know, I think in the future, there are savings to be had, but at this point, I think that the manager's budget is the right thing to do and that is my motion to accept it.
Councilmember Harris, as you're part of your motion, will you also open and close the public hearing?
Yes, it is. In fact, I would like to open and close the public hearing. We've heard a lot of comment. It certainly has been a public hearing and that's my motion, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I think my views are a bit different from Councilmember Harris. First, I want to take this opportunity to call all the, I want to take this opportunity to, I'm saying call because it's nine o'clock and we've been listening to all of the calls coming in, but I want to take an opportunity to thank all the callers that called in today. You know, no matter what side you're on, on this issue, really thanking you for calling and voicing your thoughts and concerns and your guidance of how this council should move forward. So just really want to say thank you to all the community activists and the residents and everyone that called in. So thank you for that. Also, just want to thank Dawn for your work on this budget as well and also chiefs, both of the chiefs for your presentation. I have some questions, some comments. And I know this budget is a lot because there's different components. There's two reduction plan on the table in addition to the city manager's proposed budget. So what I'm going to do, Mayor, is kind of go through just maybe four section. I want to give my comment around the police reduction plan. Want to give my comments on the fire reduction plan, my comments on the equity tool lens that was mentioned during budget and audit and is also in this packet as well, and some comments on the American Rescue Plan. So that's a little bit of my thought process. I just wanted to let you know I'm going to kind of lay out some of my thoughts on this. So first, the fire reduction plan. Chief Hahn, I just have a few questions regarding the plan that you presented. You identify, can you pull up the slide of positions that are on the table to be eliminated? I think you have another one, yeah. Okay, let me see if I can scroll in. Forty-six. I had a question on this slide in particular and noticed that of all FTEs, community service officers, there was forty-six FTE that you put on the table to be eliminated. I wanted to ask you if you're able to share with me just the roles and responsibility of the community service officers and if you know offhand what the current demographics of the CSOs are?
It's actually fifty-three and the roles are, they-
Oh, I see. Because, okay, for Officer One, Officer Two. Okay, got it.
So the roles are, they do a lot of different things around the department, but in patrol, they respond to, as I mentioned in the presentation, calls such as burglary reports, traffic accidents, and therefore officers don't have to respond. So not only have they greatly reduced the response time to those lower-level calls, but they also create an environment where officers don't get tied up on those calls and therefore a higher priority response times are reduced also. I don't know the exact diversity off the top of my head, but it is extremely diverse in that rank. For example, our academy, two academies ago, out of sixteen graduates, ten of them were women. And they're all usually very similar to that in terms of a lot of diversity, both in gender and race, which is why we expanded that program a couple of years ago through council because we felt that that would be the case and it's proven exactly that.
Thanks, Chief. The other question I had is, so can you clarify, you said that they handle traffic calls. Are most of these calls handled by the community office, the community service officers? Are most of them, do they handle mostly non-violent calls and are they armed?
Community service officers are not armed and they do not get dispatched to violent calls.
Okay. Another question I have is, are there specific tasks that they do that fall under the police department? And I'm asking that question in particular because, one, I do appreciate the work that our CSO is doing. As you confirmed, they are handling non-violent calls. But as I was listening to you, I was just thinking, you know, we created the Department of Community Response and I'm wondering if this scope of work actually falls within our newer department? And so I wanted to ask you if there are specific tasks that they do that actually falls under the police department?
Everything they do is under the police department. They take crime reports. So all of their work falls under the police department.
Okay. And a big part of this question, why I'm asking this, also, I know that we are still in the process of gearing up the Department of Community Response. And Mayor, you know, under your leadership, a big part of this creation of this department was created prior to my time here, but it was really so that we could begin to not be reliant on law enforcement and find alternative ways. And so I appreciate that there is, you know, there was work done to identify where there could be a reduction plan. But how I see it is that it's a reduction plan, but the dollars are still going to be there. And I would like to see those dollars, you know, redirected to the Department of Community Response. And I asked that question regarding the CSO because given that they're not armed and they're handling non-violent calls, it makes sense to me that, you know, this type of scope of work could and may fall under the Department of Community Response. So wanted to, wanted to share that as we're gearing up the department as well. And then just some of my thoughts and comments just regarding the police reduction plan. I do want to share is that as I was listening to the public comment in the presentation, I will share that I think oftentimes, even in community conversations that I'm part of on the ground, oftentimes gun violence and fear is often used to shut down our ability to truly imagine public safety, right? And so first, I just want to say for the residents that have called in, who have asked us not to defund the police, I want to share with you that I know it's really hard to reimagine a world that we all haven't lived in, right? So many of us have become reliant on law enforcement, but I just want to say I truly believe that together we could really imagine, based on facts and evidence-based approach, to invest in programs and communities that do increase the quality of life for our families. If we look at data, right, because I've been looking at some studies at Stanford, a few studies by university, you know, a lot of the conclusion tells us that increasing police funding, increasing police funding does not actually make our community safe. And we know through research that tells us that having more cops doesn't mean less crime. In another study that I read, even if you were to control the spending for population too, right, let's say we had, because folks are, what I'm also hearing on the other side is that, you know, we have a population increase, it's the racial from police officers to individuals, but even if you were to control for population too, there's still no significant correlation between spending in the police department to overall violent crime rates, right? And that is fact and evidence. So I wanted to be able to put that on record. I do believe there is a better model for public safety that really is about strengthening communities and investing in social safety nets. Now, that is incumbent upon the city and the county, right? And I will share again, the county gets dollars for health services and criminal justice, right? And so we also have to hold the county accountable to that. A city has a responsibility. Police falls under our jurisdiction. But I do believe that there is a better model out there. And I'll share this as a kid growing up, born and raised in Sacramento. I grew up in Oak Park and Medivu and what I will share with you is that firsthand, as a child, I will share with you that for me, having more officer necessarily didn't mean that I felt safe. And I remember, you know, walking back from SAC High, you know, seeing broken swings on playgrounds, seeing sidewalks that weren't safe, you know, lack of lighting on our streets, right? And for me, there's just so much need in our community. I think for me, a police reduction plan is really about refunding vital services for our cities and investment in communities that have suffered decades of disinvestment. And so for me, you know, I really am taking a public health approach to this and really thinking if we really want to reduce crime, I think the first thing we need to do is really figure out what's associated with that crime and that means addressing it upstream. And oftentimes, that means it's because of poverty, it's disinvestment in families and communities. And so I think, you know, it's very ironic that, you know, when we started this city council meeting today, we voted on supporting a resolution to talk about reparations, right? And when we think about the history of law enforcement in this country, it is built from a racist system and I think that's something that all of us need to acknowledge. So that's my comment just around the police reduction plan. And I appreciate that it is on the table. I appreciate staff's due diligence to actually present this as requested from the council. And I would like to see the nine point four million dollars. While it is being reduced, it's still in the general budget to be reinvested in other areas. So that would be my recommendation on that. For fire in particular, I want to share, you know, given our hot summers and increases in fires, I want to ensure that we don't eliminate any critical services that could really hurt our community. And oftentimes, fire, when they're being called, it's for a critical health crisis, right? And our firefighter on the front line when there is a medical emergency. And for me, it's really important that as we think about a reduction plan, I don't want to do in a way that will cost the health and safety of our citizens and our neighborhoods. I did have a question for the chief, for the chief of the fire department and wanted to ask you, what is the attrition rate of our current firefighters, or attrition rate of the firefight department?
We lose, Councilwoman, we lose approximately thirty, twenty-five to thirty firefighters per year. And right now, we're going into a heavy time because a lot of our firefighters are timing out at the twenty-five-year mark. So that it's quite possibly could be, could be higher over the next couple, oh, from now to through the next five years.
Thanks, Chief. I ask that in particular because I know there's a commitment from the city council to really increase the diversity of our fire department. And I really appreciate you bringing forth and working with me as well to bring forth a program, the door program in particular, to increase diversity in the fire department. And that's something that I am in full support of, especially as we think about attrition. I want that department to look like our communities. And so that's really important for me. The other question I had for you, Chief, and also this is for the city manager, is I want to know, given that fire does, you know, they handle fire, medical emergency, there are different fire stations. I wanted to know if, do we have like a fire master plan that helps guide us in making decisions around fire in particular, in terms of infrastructure, response time? As a new council member, I'm just, I'm curious to know if we have a master, like a fire master plan that helps guide the city on how we are making decision in whether that's being more efficient, that's investing maybe in critical service and fire. Wanted to know, do we have a master plan?
Yes, we do. We're in the process right now of reviewing it and redoing it. And the plan will be for twenty-two to twenty-six. When I got here, it was somewhat outdated, so we've gone through, we've done some of the things that were currently in the plan, so that's why I'm updating it now. And the door program would be a large part of that.
Okay. I think for me, for the fire department in particular, and why I'm asking these questions, one, as a new council member, before I make any votes on eliminating anything from the fire department in particular, is that I actually want to see what the type of guidance, whether that's a master plan guiding the city council on investment and services. And so for the fire reduction plan in particular, I don't feel that I have the information necessary in order to vote for this fire reduction plan moving forward. And so I wouldn't support this. If my colleagues do decide to pull a few of these items from the reduction plan to eliminate it, one of the programs that I do want to urge us to think about and say that I will be fighting for is the door program. I think that's really important. We talk about diversity and want to make sure that our firefighters represent our community. The second, the fourth, the third piece I wanted to talk about was the budget. And I had mentioned this in budget and audit regarding really utilizing an equity lens as we began to move forward on items and having an analysis on ways in which the budget, the racial equity analysis on how this budget impacts minorities and folks that are often left behind. Wanted to ask city staff regarding this equity tool. And what was proposed was, because it may take a while, we're not sure about the timeline, which is what I heard from city staff, is that perhaps we can think about an interim equity tool moving forward. And wanted to ask, what was the status on, what is the status on that? And also wanted to put that on record because I think we talk so much about racial equity and I don't know what the timeline on the racial equity initiative is, but I do think it's important that we start thinking about an interim tool until we can actually implement something like this.
Councilmember Vang, I'm going to have Laney Millstein chime in here, but as we talked about at budget and audit, we do have a longer-term plan that we discussed. We're working with the consultants and many of your council offices to put that in play. But we can come up with an interim plan with interim measures. It's just, it just has to be very clear what the council wants that interim plan to look like. Laney?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. Councilmember Vang, as we discussed last week, we have our team from the different council offices, me and myself, Lynette Hall, as staff, working to outline a scope of work with the consultant. We sent back our questions to them just this morning. We're hoping to have a meeting in the next couple of weeks. We envision that we would be doing robust outreach in the fall. That is to, as Howard said, we have to understand what we're measuring. So council has to define their what equity means to the community and the council. And then we need to establish the appropriate measures so that we can assure that we're accountable to those measures. So all that said, we will and have included a query to our consultant about having an interim tool available to us to be part of the next proposed budget review. And we hope that that will be the case and we can continue to report back to you on our progress as we engage with the consultants.
Councilmember Vang, can I tag on to you for a second because it's such a great line of questioning? And I just want to make sure, city manager Chan, are you there? Because she's got this great point. And as it relates to fire, she said this and I just, I might have missed it. I'm getting tired too. But does the fire budget include the diversity plan that we asked for, city manager?
It does not. So as part of the proposed budget, the nine point four million from the police department is included. The four point eight million increase in the fire, in the fire department, I'm sorry, the nine point four in the police budget is included in the proposed budget. Four point eight million is included in the fire budget, but the two point two million related to the door program is not.
Okay, because following up on Councilmember Vang's great questions here, I'd like to second Jeff's motion, but only if he's willing to include that component in the fire department. So we need that diversity component to happen. So I don't know if Councilmember Harris is willing to accept that as a friendly amendment, but if he is, I'll second his motion.
So, Angelique, if I can respond to your query there, you know, I believe that that program is essential and it was the will of the council to do exactly that, to diversify the fire department. And I would be willing to accept that amendment. And if you'll second the budget with that caveat, then I can go for that.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
You have a budget on the, okay, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Geta, then-
Mayor, I just, sorry, I actually have one more thing. So that was the budget. We'll really appreciate it. I also just want to mention the American Rescue Plan. I know that there are going to be conversations coming up very soon in July. I know in your State of the City address, you will probably lay out a plan for how you envision those dollars to be spent. Yeah, and I wanted to make a direction that I like us, for us, as we move forward on deciding how we plan, how we will spend dollars from the American Rescue Plan, for us to create a service-
how we will spend dollars from the American Rescue Plan, for us to create a survey directly to the community, to residents of the city, to help guide us on how we should allocate and reimburse these dollars from the American Rescue Plan. I know we did, I know that this council did that before a council, for, before Councilmember Sean Aloli and Councilwoman Katie Valenswell. Before we came on, I know that y'all did a survey for the CARES dollars. I like to see a survey also launched as well to the residents of the city in terms of a survey and how they would like to see the dollars being spent. And so that is an ask that I have regarding the American Rescue Plan. And those are my comments regarding the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There is now a motion on the floor to pass the budget as, as amended with the fire department diversity item. So let us hear from other members. Councilmember Vice Mayor Shneer.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, I have a few comments. And then a recommendation as we go forward. First of all, on, on the equity issue, we have some language that we'll pass along and I'm not sure how you want to do this, that I think tightens up the request that was made in budget and audit. I think it improves it. And I want to also make sure that as we talk about a tool for the operational part of our budget, we also talk about a specific tool for the capital part of our budget. I think what we build and where we build it is incredibly important and will demonstrate as much as the operations that we're walking, the talk that we're talking about here. So if, if that's okay, and, and maybe I can get it to the city manager. I don't, I don't think it's anything controversial. It does exactly what the Pro Tem and, and Councilmember Vang are talking about. Just tightens it up a little bit. So I see Laney shaking her head. She might have seen this already. So on, on the equity piece, I think it's good. What I'd also like to do is offer up something. I, I made a recommendation at our last budget meeting around lighting and looking at all of the fields that we have in the city and those that have lighting and those that don't. And to actually use that as a pilot or a test case for looking at the capital projects and looking at equity within that. So I think it would be pretty straightforward, looking at communities, under-resourced or resource communities, their parks and where the lighting is. So that's one thing. And if, if Jeff's, I'm going to make a motion later, but, but if Jeff's motion is on the table, that's one piece that I would ask that he take as a friendly amendment, that we tighten up the language and use park lighting, a plan for park lighting as a pilot for that.
Yeah. And I know that Vice Mayor Shneer has talked to me about this. I would support that. And again, in an effort to try to create as much consensus as possible around a main motion, I would encourage Councilmember Harris to accept that.
I'd like to ask for some clarification. Councilmember Shneer, we haven't seen your language. So if it is the intent that it goes into the resolution, could you perhaps read that out loud to us and then provide a copy to us so that we have it for clarity?
Sure. So it's the city manager shall incorporate a racial equity lens and decision support tool in the review of all budgetary recommendations to council, including the annual budget, mid-year budget and staff reports in conjunction with develop, with development of a shared definition of equity in collaboration with the community, which is what we've talked about, and the adoption of a racial equity resolution. This racial equity tool should guide city departments in providing a holistic assessment of how equity is prioritized and addressed across city budgetary decisions. Analysis of equity and social impacts of budget requests will ensure programs, projects and other investments reduce disparities and promote service level equity, improve participation and support leadership development. These analyses will also hopefully highlight opportunities to implement changes, both in the short and long term, to help meet citywide racial equity goals. So, and we will, Allison in my office can certainly get that to you since she wrote it.
Okay. And then relative to lighting, are you proposing to include funding for that? Are you proposing for us to outline a model for establishing whether lighting is supported by the community in a district and then, or in a particular park? And then we would return with funding proposals?
This isn't a, this is more of a plan so we can start it off. I, I would look, I think only four of our parks have lights. I, I would look at this as a multi-year effort. So all I'm looking for is the department to kind of dig in a little bit and look at it and create a plan.
Okay, thank you.
That should be done in-house.
But it's not a money allocation appropriation. This makes it easier, I think. Okay. Good, Councilman Harris, would you, would you accept those as friendly amendments, please?
So Mayor, I have to ask the manager a couple of questions real quick. You know, we've been talking about racial equity lens for a while on this council. And I think in theory, we all agree with it. It just makes sense. It's really common sense. But Mr. Manager, have you looked into what that would cost? Does it mean more FTE? You know, what, what does it actually take to put that racial equity lens on all of your staff reports and, and analysis piece on everything we do? You know, we also, we, we already do it with local business enterprise and, you know, other, other aspects. But what would that actually entail?
No, we haven't quantified the cost. I think the first order of business is making sure that we are clear on what this council wants to see in this equity lens. I mean, Vice Mayor talks about having a shared vision with our community. I think that's really good as well. But, but that's, that's the, the part that staff's really trying, struggling with is because when we want to have more outreach and, and more discussions with our community about this, I think it drags out the timeline. So the discussion at budget and audit where, you know, this twelve to eighteen month was just not acceptable to this council. That's where we came up with this temporary or interim set of measures, if you will. So Laney, if I'm just speaking, if we have some magnitude on the cost, please chime in, but I don't think we do.
Well, I, I, our initial efforts are somewhere around the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar at mark, and that's to get our initial plan done. But Councilmember Harris, you're asking a really good question about what it's going to take people-wise to implement this. And part of the whole conversation that Ami has been leading has been about normalizing and training and bringing staff up to speed in order to be able to do the appropriate analysis. And so, you know, we will do our very best as, as the city manager indicated, we will work towards creating an interim tool that will look at proposed budget additions as an, in, in an equity, from an equity perspective. I think a lot of departments are already doing that around their capital plans. And perhaps what we need to do is better define where it's already being done. I don't believe there is one singular tool that will get everything done. Rather, we will have a, 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 a set of tools that we will use to provide this analysis. But Councilmember Harris, it will be a, a heavy lift to put this into, into every council report in, in, in a meaningful way. But it is something that we're committed to as staff to bringing forward so that the community and the council have an understanding of the impacts of what they're considering and, and what the outcomes could be should that investment be approved by council. That's our commitment.
Thank you, Laney. So, so Jay, I have this to offer to you. This is a process. This isn't something I believe that the council just snaps their fingers and staff can get it done. You know, a, as a council, we lay an awful lot on the plate of staff. I think that we should take this action, but also understand that this is a process and it doesn't happen, you know, immediately and, you know, overtax the people who already work extremely hard for us. I, I believe that certainly with Ami and, and the working group that they've created, that we're on this path. And so I appreciate you offering this. I would just ask that you understand that there's going to be some patience involved to actually make this a reality and not, you know, not overly tax the staff. You know, this is an ongoing conversation, but certainly in, in intent and in theory, I, I'm completely in agreement with you. So are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay. I mean, I've been here for ten years. As I've said before, they've beaten the urgency out of me. But let's do it right. If it takes a little longer, that's fine, but we need to get there. And I think we need to keep pushing and, and, you know, we've had a few hearings on this at Law &amp; Ledge. If we want to use that, if we want to use PP&amp;E, I think all of our committee structure, we should take a hard look at where the help is. You know, reaching out to the community, we've got all of our commissions. So I think we need to be smart about using the resources that we have that we're not utilizing right now. But I get it.
You, you know, I, again, I agree with you in theory. So yes, I'll, I'll accept that in the motion, absolutely.
Don't go, don't go far because there's more.
Oh, well, wait a minute now. Hold, hold on there, hold on there, buddy.
Let's move, guys, come on.
I'm going. So next, it, it wouldn't be a budget if I didn't talk about young people at some point. I, I think overall, we're doing really good. And if we go back, we can talk about the youth development campaign. We can talk about the youth manager position within the city manager's office. We can talk about recreating Yipsey. We can talk about ride free RT. And just as an aside, what we heard at RT last night is that youth ridership is coming back quicker than regular ridership at RT. And they're pretty excited about that as well. We can talk about the public safety resolution. Those, those are places that we've been. My frustration at this point is still that we are very siloed in how we do it. And I think the fire department's work, which has been great, and I know working with Lindy, but is a really good example of a challenge that we have. If, if we are serious about young people and we want that to also be a lens by which we look at all.
You immunity yourself.
I, I think that we can, we can do better. And what I want to propose is that the city manager develop a, a plan, again, no cost involved at this point, to create a children's cabinet or a youth cabinet within the city. So that it's not just Yipsey as sometimes marginalized doing youth work. It's not just Lindy. But it's really bringing all of our departments together when we talk about young people and what we're doing. This has been a model in other cities that we can take and I'm more than happy to, to work with the city manager. But that's sitting on, this isn't a bunch of young people sitting around. These are our department heads or someone with budget-making decision who can talk about it. And this is, you know, maybe a twice a year meeting to talk about what we're doing for young people holistically so that we could move forward on something. So, so I want to recommend that, that we provide direction to the city manager to create that plan and come back to us with it. And the two pieces that I would like to see as their first things are, one, how we, how we implement the public safety resolution. Today was a great discussion about what we're doing and not doing around public safety. We passed this resolution with a unanimous vote, but we're not using it in, in how we work. So this is why if we had a children's cabinet, this is a, this is something that they could really look at. The second thing that I would want them to look at is the youth commission. The youth commission is kind of sliding backwards into projects rather than a policymaking or a body of recommendations back to the council. So those are two things. Again, no dollars associated with either one of those. But as we talk about this, we have youth programs in many of our departments across the board. I just want them to have a structure so that they can work together. Mr. City Manager, do you think that's possible?
Yes, I'll work with your team to better understand what, what your expectations are for this plan.
That'd be great. And we'll get you some examples from other cities that have done this.
Okay.
Great. The, the other thing about youth is when we had our budget committee meeting, whatever, a few weeks ago, I, I asked for two things. I asked for the plan around lighting and then we asked for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to, to pay the fees for young, for sports, kids' sports from three to six P M. at our parks and on weekends. And somehow our finance people lost that recommendation and then it was made the same time we did the recommendation about women and children, I think the six hundred and eighty thousand and also the fuel network at that same meeting. So I'm hoping that we can put a hundred and seventy thousand in the budget so that permit fees are not a barrier for anyone, for any of our young people to use our fields.
We can do that.
Okay. So, so that's, those are the big pieces. And hopefully all that then would be included in the resolution. I, I also want to say something about police and fire. And I was one of the people, I think others did too. First of all, when we talk about reductions, what, what we've been talking about today is not a reduction. It's a reduction from the city manager's budget, but it's really keeping the budget at the same level as this year. So it's actually deleting an increase and not doing a reduction. It's not defunding the police or defunding, defunding fire. I, I, I have to say that today, this was a, this was a really frustrating meeting because what we do, I, I think in this process, first of all, we don't have enough time to go deeper into issues. So I'm not on the budget committee this year, which was a change. So it was a little harder for me. But, but what we have is one time when we're presented with the entire police and fire budget in a meeting. And then one time where we're making a decision about whether to go forward with it or not. So there's not a whole lot of time for a deeper dive into what we're actually doing and what can happen. And I, I think this has been a tremendously difficult year for everyone in the city and especially the police department. I want to say that, and I think they've performed really well in it. But what we saw tonight from the chief was a binary decision, right? You can either cut all this stuff which you like, or we get nine point four million dollars. What we saw from the fire chief was at least two options of a way you can go, but kind of drastic cuts as well, without looking at, in the first case, a hundred and fifty-seven million dollar budget. And in the second case, what, a hundred and forty-two million dollar budget as we go forward. And I, I feel like for this council, which has spent a lot of time doing a lot of good work, it didn't really give us the time to go deeper into, you know, what are the potential options there? If you want to, if you want to really look at it and say, should we be doing something different or not? So Howard, let me ask you, when, how is the data collection and calls for service analysis going? And what will we know and when will we know it? Because I, I'm not in favor of cutting the police budget beyond what they're getting this year. But I also want to see, and I've asked for this before, and, and I know it's going to take some time, what this looks like to transition certain activities from the police department, especially maybe from fire as well, over into the, the Department of Community Response? Because does, does that allow us and that analysis will tell us, can we keep the police department stable by taking away certain aspects and act, and responsibilities and putting them someplace else? When will we know more about that?
So, you know, Bridget's on the call here. She can talk to you about the status of that analysis because it is, is a heavy lift. She has been working on it with our team at police. Here's what I'll say about the timing of potentially transitioning calls from PD to DCR. This is a conversation I had with the mayor when we first started talking about what this could look like. And my commitment back then, and still my commitment today, is that over the course of about two years, once we stand up the department, we can actually take a look at exactly what you're describing, Vice Mayor. And at the point where we can actually say that these calls can be responded to without the use of law enforcement or fire department. That's when we can have that conversation about, okay, what does that look like? But for the time being, I think it helps with workload. I know Bridget right now is working on taking so, many of the calls related to homelessness and the like. But that doesn't translate into reduction of demand in the police department at this point. And it won't for some period of time. And, and so Bridget, if you're on the call, can you fill in the council here on the status of that call analysis, please?
Thanks, Jay. We are working. Thanks for the question. And we are working on that. As you know, I've been working with the police department. And we've been even looking at fire in those spaces where we can take those calls for service and support them collaboratively to reduce those calls. I, I would say though, it's not, you know, we're, we're moving slowly on it, Jay. I'm not at a space where we're able to, to, you know, put out any numbers at this point or specific numbers beyond what we provided in the February. or specific numbers beyond what we provided in the February second meeting related to DCR initially. I am hoping and I will be working towards coming back in late August or at some point in August for an update on DCR. And hopefully I will be able to provide you some numbers at that point.
So, okay, great. So what I would like to do then is I'm going to make a substitute motion. Include everything that Mr. Harris has put in his motion, plus what I've suggested around the lighting plan around the children's budget and the 170,000. And recommend that we take the increases for police and fire and basically park them for about six months. And during that time, ask Budget and Audit to take a much deeper look at these two budgets. And see, because, because again, we're asked to make a binary decision all over here, all over there. If there's a way that we can look on it and look at it in a little bit of a, more of a nuanced way, I'd love to see us be able to do that. So I don't know if I'll get a second, but, but that's my substitute motion. So it's not, it's not defunding. I want to leave the 2.2 million in because I don't think we have a choice. We have to move forward on that, on the diversity issue. But the increases that Howard, you had put in your budget for police and fire, I'd like to put a six month hold on, put them in a reserve account or wherever you want. But ask Budget and Audit Committee and the council to take a deeper look into those two budgets.
I'll second that motion.
Can I chime in here for a second?
Yeah.
It's important to note that of the two departments, a majority of those increases are due to either step increases, wage increases, pension increases. So I don't know if that's going to be possible to park it for six months. We haven't done the math or anything like that, so.
It's a motion from a member of the governing body, and I appreciate, yes, that, that it may not be practical.
Or possible.
Or possible. So Vice Mayor, do you want to amend the motion given that advice from the city manager or keep it as is?
Well, I, I, what I'm trying to get to, and I'm, I'm open for advice for any of my colleagues here, is some period of time where we have more than, you know, two hours of people calling at two minutes each and then, you know, an hour of discussion to talk about the two largest departments we have and what we're doing with them. So I'm open to suggestions on that. And I'm, again, I'm not trying to take the money away. I just want to have a better understanding. And I'd like to frankly see some options rather than cutting, you know, 60, 70 positions.
Well, I think maybe, why don't we go to the other members and I can come back to you maybe think about a little bit about how you might want to frame that motion. I mean, this is, you know, the, the budget does get voted on one, one day every year. And what the manager said is that holding the money is not practical. So.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
No, I, no, I want to go through the other members here. I'm sorry. Other members have been waiting.
I have one more request, Mayor, which is very simple and very easy.
So does your motion stand or not?
My motion stands at this point.
Okay, the motion stands as phrased, even with the, the manager is weighed in and advising. I did hear a second from Councilmember Vang on the motion, correct?
And then, and then one other thing is I would ask the Budget and Audit Committee to take a look at our process for next year or even for mid-year and see if they have any recommendations about how to do this. So we have a little bit more time.
Sure. We, we can do that. Okay, so there is a substitute motion and a second. Let's hear from Councilmember Geta and Councilmember Valenzuela. I'm going to make a final comment. So if any other member, Councilmember Lalo is up as well. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start off with, with that, from the endpoint there with what Council, Vice Mayor Chenier brought up. Yes, and I'll, I'll support that, that motion as well. And even if it fails, I'm going to be calling that, calling for it during budget and audit that we bring back the calls for service analysis, at least at the end of the third quarter. We see the budget once a year and then a snapshot in January of the following year. And I, and I, in years past, it gives us very little time to inform us about, about how the mid-year budget comes. Unfortunately, sometimes it becomes a situation where then it becomes a free for all if there is any extra or surplus or unexpected revenue. So I, I think looking at it from the third quarter and the second quarter so that we don't come up into the, into the, the, both the, the annual budget or the mid-year budget will be helpful. So I'm glad that Councilmember Vang seconded that motion. Whether, whether it's, it's a practical or practical to hold on to it or not. At the very least, that if, maybe the question for the city manager to make this better. If, if, would the report out at the third quarter be, be flexible enough? Is that enough time for you to say, hey, some of, we can hold on to it at least for the third quarter and see where we're at? And if not, then look at the six months?
I think we'll have to report back on that because I, I just don't know how the, the increases hit and what the obligations are under the contract and the timing of the pension payments.
I, I'm, I'm going to weigh in here. I'm worried about.
Well, well.
Go ahead.
With all due respect, Mayor, I'm, I'm just trying to finish up my comments here and you can weigh in after as well.
Excuse me, I'm the presiding officer here. If I want to take back the gavel, I will. And, and I'm, I'm going to do it because I'm going to, then I'm going to let you finish. I'm concerned here about a motion that is on the floor that is not, that cannot be implemented. And that there might be five votes for a motion that cannot be implemented. And so this debate should be had purely. If you're against the increases, then that's, that's your position. That's okay. But that's the way the motion should be framed, not something halfway where something's delayed for X number of months. Because the city manager is telling us that cannot be, that cannot be done or implemented. So I'm concerned about, about the process here. I understand there's some frustration about the process about, you know, about not seeing the budget enough times. I, I respect that. I understand that. But I, I would like the budget, I, I would just like you to think, Vice Mayor Chenier, about the motion itself, because we could be heading into some dangerous territory here in terms of whatever outcome the council desires. If it's not clear and it's not practical, then we're going to be confusing the public and our own team. Councilman Geta, continue.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'd let me continue, I was going to get to that point. That these motions and actions aren't written in stone. If the motion was to pass and we found that there was actually an inability to execute it, we could come back and address that motion so that it would be, could actually implemented. Now, if it doesn't pass, I totally understand that and I respect the city manager's point in that. So again, for me, I think it's whether the motion fails or passes, we still need to have a report back and look at both the two largest departments coming to the city council well before the mid-year and well before the annual year. And I do remember we used to have a much deeper presentation beforehand. And I know this year was a little different, but that is a, that I think is a direction that I'd like to make. And if, if the motion doesn't pass and the Councilmember Chenier, I'm not sure where you're going with your motion. But I still believe that we need to bring that back in the third quarter to see where we are for the calls for service and also on, on the fire side. I, it'll help us also inform us in, as we move forward with the diversity program, how well we're doing. What I'm hearing from the fire chief is that we have a unique opportunity where the attrition may be higher. And it's a time for us to be thinking strategically that if we really want to increase the number of people from our city, from a diverse community to be part of the fire department, then this is a time for us to be very, very surgical about how we implement this, 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 this diversity program. And I do want to thank the city manager and the fire chief for talking, for, for bringing, for working with my office on getting this program together. I do feel that this in combination with, with the work that the city auditor is doing and the Office of OPSA will help change the dynamics in, in our department as well. So first, I'd like, I want to go back to that question about third quarter reporting. Mr. City Manager, can you do that? Report back on the third quarter of where we are in calls for analysis?
The calls for service from both police and fire?
Yes.
Yeah, just the composition of the calls, correct?
Correct.
I believe we can get there.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. The second thing, and this is Councilmember Chenier, I was going to, Vice Mayor Chenier, I was going to ask if you would be willing to change your substitute motion to also look at the deferred maintenance in parks as part of that. I, I greatly appreciate Councilmember Vang's analysis of the broken swing. If you look at our parks in our older communities, we don't have the benefit of new development of Quimby fees. You're going to find that they have tougher challenges in that area. So I'd like to make sure that we do the equity analysis as well for deferred maintenance. So we don't have that broken swing. I'm pretty sure that once we start looking at it and we see the lack of lighting in certain parks, we're also going to start seeing that there are, that those parks are also having challenges specifically with the recent increase in the cost of construction that's affecting our ability to go out and complete some of our projects. I want to also bring up this point that I think Councilmember Harris, you know, outlined earlier. We've got a, a unique opportunity this year in this, in this budget and this year's resources that we're going to get. We have this budget and we can't look at this budget in a vacuum. We've got the ARP funds from the federal government that are coming in. And then also there's still debate about funding from the state legislature. So that equity lens, I think that Councilmember Chenier talked about is critical that we, and I think he may have, staff may have sent it to everybody. It's critical that we support that effort and do an interim tool so that not only in, in the CIP budget, but through the ARP funds and the future state dollars that we get, we start instituting that interim tool. And as we move through the race and equity, if we're actually going to refine it, so it, it does, it helps us when we have a final approach. So I'll say that, closing that we've got a unique opportunity with a lot of different resources where we can begin to reform how we do our budgets for the long run and not look at this budget as a vacuum. But I'll, I'll be supporting Councilmember Chenier's motion here. And, and if that fails, I still think the city manager will ask that the report back to the Budget and Audit Committee on those two major departments within the, the mid-quarters.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Well, this conversation took a few turns since I raised my hand. So I'm going to try to do my best to talk about where I'm coming from and figure out where I fall on all of this. But I do want to lift up where Vice Mayor Chenier, what he was mentioning in terms of this is not a defund police item. You know, 30 and a half million is an increase from last year. And I know it's, the chief painted a really devastating bleak photo, picture for us about how he would choose to address that reduction in funding. But we've got to be able to imagine the bleak picture of someone who loses a loved one to preventable violence or, or untreated mental illness or because they don't have housing. You know, this is a real choice we're making. And if we can prevent someone from having to call 911, like that's really what safety is about. That's calling 911 is, you don't feel safe when you're calling 911. Something's wrong. And, and I think we need to find a better balance. A $30 million increase in two budgets is substantial. And especially when our communities and our businesses and our youth just need so much in order to recover from this pandemic. And I know it's super tempting to say, oh, but the American Recovery Act funding. But like, I know of requests that are already beyond double on what we're going to have from the American Recovery Act funding. And so we have to be honest with ourselves about that too, because we will have to make choices in that process. If we don't free up money in this budget to address the triage, to address the urgent issues, we are going to have to choose between whether the business community is going to get the support they need or whether the youth will get all the support they need or whether we'll be able to fully fund the master plan that we've been working on for homelessness. And that's not a choice that I feel good about, which is why I'm so opposed to the increase in funding during a pandemic, during all these times. So I'm trying, I just, I guess I want to ask a clarifying question because I'm not, and I just want to make sure I understand where the motion stands after Councilmember Gera's comments, Vice Mayor Chenier. So essentially what you're proposing is put the money on a hold for six months. And I'm wondering if that's tantamount to essentially saying, as the mayor said, we're not going to approve this funding increase and we're going to consider this in the mid-year budget? Or if you're imagining this to be something different?
I think that, well, number one, if we need to shorten the timeframe to make it easier and, and make that easier on the city manager and cash flow on these, and we want to go three months, that's fine with me. Again, my goal here is to have at least Budget and Audit, if not the council, to have more time to really look in, deeper into the budgets of these two organizations that are our largest departments and make a decision about whether we should go forward. If, if we're looking at three months, you know, it, it's hard for me to believe that for police, that would be a quarter of nine million, right? So a little over two million and for fire, it would be about a million dollars. That, that would be findable within their current budgets. It's very small amounts, less than 1% of fire. It's, it's probably one and a half percent of police. So. Okay, so I, I, yeah.
Just operationally, then, so you're imagining we put this on hold and basically there'd be another vote in, in three months? Before it would move forward? Okay. I, you know, I don't feel good about the spending increase from this year. And I definitely don't feel great about the one from, from last year either. So, I mean, I'm inclined to support that just because it does give us more time to consider if the increase this year is something we can support. And I appreciate the participatory nature of what you're talking about, Vice Mayor Chenier, in terms of like giving us as well as the community more time to understand. We've been saying now for over a year that we're going to transition to DCR and we've not yet really started the work. And I'm not blaming anybody. It's a lot of work. But I do want us to be really thoughtful of like, you know, we're committing to staff who are now assuming that they'll have a position and stability. And that's something that's hard for me, given that we know we're going to transition. And I feel like we're locking ourselves in now to a level of funding where every year it's going to be the same thing over and over again. Sorry, we need 10 million more. Sorry, we need $15 million more. And at some point, we have to figure out how to break that cycle if we're really going to talk about shifting some response away from PD or hopefully preventing PD from having to respond to the level of calls that they're responding to now. So I'm inclined to support your motion because you're saying we'll get the chance to vote again on the increase for these two departments. And, and I also really appreciate Councilmember Vang lifting up the need for strategic planning and thoughtfulness. Like I appreciate what fire has done, you know, I might not always agree with what they're proposing, but at least I understand why they're proposing it and I can have more theory of change around what goals they're trying to achieve. And that's something we're still kind of missing from the police department. You know, we hear about response times and number of officers per capita, but we're not really hearing about goals. You know, we're not really hearing about impact and there's no real metrics for me to determine if the money that they're spending is actually achieving the thing that it is or if we should be spending the money somewhere else. I believe ideologically that we should, but I would love to have the data to talk about that in a much more informed way. So I will support your motion, Vice Mayor Chenier. But if that doesn't pass, then I won't vote on the main budget because I just don't agree with this level of funding. Thank you.
And, and I'm happy to amend it to do a three-month time period, which should make it easier, I would hope, on the city manager and the processes that they have, if that's all right with my second.
Well, Vice Mayor, before you finish, may I offer a suggestion? If this motion passes, would it be acceptable to move forward with those things that we're contractually obligated to do? Step increases, pay increases and make our pension payments and those things that are not contractually obligated or funds pensions. Those are the ones that we've pulled in advance for this three months.
Sure. I will do that for this year.
Okay, thank you.
As a caveat to that, City Manager, does that, I mean, because the, this nine million is being portrayed as being almost entirely that. So I guess I'm trying to understand what we're saying. So are we saying that we're going to move forward with the pay increases? And how much would be left of the $9 million if we do that?
That's correct. Dawn, can you jump in here and let us know what, how we can split that off? Because there are things that we have to do and then there are things that we're adding in the police department, for instance, for transparency and, you know.
Right, but that, that makes sense. And I'm happy to do that. I, I'm really just trying to make a point here, which I think is really important, that we need to think about this much more. But we're also talking about not touching 98% of the budget, right? So it, money is fungible between the 9.4 and the other 167 or what, 57 that they have. But I'm happy to hear. But I'm happy to hear from Ms. Milstein, how much is contractually obligated out of the nine point four?
Well, I'll, I think Dawn has a thought.
Or Dawn.
She has it up on screen. Dawn, Dawn has the spreadsheet on screen.
Which, which spreadsheet would you like, Howard?
Well, no, I'm just, we're just trying to figure out, out the nine point four.
Howard, can I just share, so, so the order of operation, the very first thing we're gonna do on July first is make our pension payment for unfunded liability. So whatever portion of the police department's budget is related to that, that goes out the door on July one, so we can save several million dollars. Everything else, that nine four and, and I don't know what you have proposed for the fire department, that four eight um, can be plugged as a negative in their budget. And you know, the City Manager and the, and the, and the chiefs can work together to determine how to roll out potential opportunities for savings, or we will be back at mid-year sharing where we are in spending relative to the authorized budget and or the adjusted budget less nine four and four eight respectively. Um, I also point out that there are no budget audit committee meetings until October. So if this is something that we wanna report out to budget audit prior to that, we'll need to get those scheduled. But it is effectively reducing each of their budgets by that amount. And then there will be a, a, a management decision how to get to that savings.
And Howard, I'm, I'm flexible on this, but I, I mean, my point here is we were given a binary decision between catastrophe and give us our money. And I, I just don't think, you know, we should be put in that position without any kind of options to look at it. And that's our responsibility as well, but we're not structured to, to really have those conversations.
Can I also ask for a clarification? Because we talked about funding the two point two for fire. Is that gonna come out of the Housing Trust Fund or are we gonna pull that, are we gonna reduce their increase of the four point eight by the two point two?
Where, you guys were recommending it, where were you gonna take it from?
There is only one place, the Housing Trust Fund.
Yes.
Well, I think we need to do it. I, I'm gonna leave that, delegate that responsibility from my point of view. I mean, it's not my recommendation that came, it's from the fire chief. So I gotta figure out, or you guys, you all have to figure it out. I don't know. Well, we're supporting the council to do it. We, we do things all the time that we don't know where the money is coming from.
It, it will come from the Housing Trust Fund, Vice Mayor, if it, if it's approved.
So let's just seek some clarity here. I still don't, I still like it from his home. I heard from Milstein, I thought there were some contractually required pay increases that were part of the nine point nine plus million dollars as well. I'd like to see that up on the screen actually, because Howard asked the right question, which is uh, and Vice Mayor Chenier agreed to his suggestion that that which is contractually mandated would go forward under the substitute motion. Um, and that which isn't would be held for three months. So I, 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 I'm gonna, I oppose the motion, but for clarity sake, I think we need to understand what the impact of the, of, of that decision is, please.
So Mayor, um, I'm looking for the right SBI. We did line out the twenty-six million dollar increase for the total budget increase, which most of it was from police and fire. And that was mostly from the pensions and step increases and insurance. I mean, the only thing that we are really adding to the police department are the five positions.
Which is, which, which is valued at how much? What are the five positions costing us? Is it, and is that the only discretionary value of the increase?
It's approximately nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, is that the only discretionary part of the increase?
That is correct.
Okay, so everything else, nine point plus nine point four million dollars minus the nine hundred thousand additional positions, the rest of it is contractually required.
Well, then, then Laney gave us another option, which is you just have a hole in each of those budgets and you decide, you figure out how to deal with it depending on what happens in three months.
Well, that's right, okay.
If I could ask a clarifying question there, if that's okay, I'm sorry, I'll be super brief.
Okay.
Cause I thought in the budget, if I misunderstood, Don, and I just wanna clarify, that we were also making the choice to keep what was previously grant-funded positions as permanent beyond the time that we were required to keep those positions. Isn't that a discretionary choice as well?
That's correct. We lo, we did lose about six hundred and fifty thousand in revenue, so you would add that to it. And then as far as what Councilmember Chenier was saying, we could, you know, we could take the money. The increase is out of police and fire, move it to the citywide and community support budget, the budget stays whole. But as Laney explained, we will, you know, at mid-year, if we haven't done something to actually reduce their, you know, um, FTE, which is where the chief has explained, are the majority of their costs, then they will be over budget at the time we come back at mid-year. With both departments, the majority of their operating costs are all related to positions. So absent reducing positions, you will not achieve the savings that we're talking about.
But what I hear the Vice Mayor saying is he wants to have more analysis about that, about what the impact of that is um, at mid-year.
No, before mid-year, three months in.
At the third quarter.
Third quarter of the calendar year, right.
Hey Mayor, I have my hand up if, when, when you wanna resume.
Yeah, let, let, let's get back now to, are you done, Vice Mayor? Yeah. It wa, it was Councilmember Valenzuela, I apologize. Are you, are you done? Okay, now, now Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thanks Mayor, I have one question. I'm the seconder on Councilmember Harris's motion. Uh, and Councilmember Chenier inexplicably made some changes to Councilmember Harris's motion and then also made a secondary motion, so I need to make sure I'm still good as a second on that motion. And I think I am okay, but one thing I have a question for you, Councilmember Chenier, is what do you mean by park lights? There are a lot of different lights.
Athletic, athletic fields.
Okay, well, my, you know, those are very controversial in communities. So just as, I don't mind including analysis, but I've built um, seven parks. And I'm gonna tell you right now, most communities don't want the athletic fields lit up because of the amount of um, sort of uh, light uh, that goes into the neighborhood. So I'm just, put this out there to you, I don't, you know, if you decide to do some, it's okay, I don't, I understand what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I think it would be, I, I wouldn't think of foisting this on any community. I think this is a multi-year thing. Um, and if a community doesn't want it, it's fine. I'm trying to think through public safety and where our young people can be at night. So they're doing the right thing.
I, I understand, I just wanna make sure it's not gonna be forced on communities, cause it's a really hard when you do have them sometimes.
I appreciate that, thank you.
However, I do think lights in parks that light pathways at night are really important. And all parks don't have them in the city of Sacramento, and you might wanna ha, take a look at that. There might also be some, some street lights that would be more important to you than park lights that are in more community areas. So just my, my two cents there, but I am happy to second that, Mayor. I just have one thought on this overall process and then I'll hand it over to my colleagues for a vote cause I don't think there's any other hands up or maybe there's one. Um, but I've been on this council for uh, this is my eleventh year. You know, we don't do budgets the same way as the state does. The city of Sacramento has a codified system for doing budgets. And I, we, we uh, expanded that capacity when we added budget and audit and gave people more opportunity to talk about budget and audit and really dig in. And I don't know what's happened to budget and audit because I'm not on it. We really have a duty to adopt a budget by July first. And when the City Manager and the Mayor are telling you that it's not possible and then your response is, well, if it isn't possible, then we can come back and change it, when they're telling you right now that it's not possible, it's, I think that's an irresponsible budget to pass. I understand that there are a couple of you on this council that don't like this budget. Generally, then you would, you know, find some compromise that is feasible and insight of possibility. But just punting for three months really is um, offensive to staff. All the staff that are involved in this, there's a lot of staff that'll be hung up on all of this. It will affect every department. Every department will be hanging out there. And you buy up Howard's time and Dawn's time and anything else creative you wanted to be doing, they'll, they can't do, because they'll have to spend the next three months figuring out how to not spend money. And one thing I've learned on this council is not spending money later costs you money. So everything that you were trying to do now will be more expensive because you did it later. So I understand what Councilmember Chenier is trying to do. Sounds like you wanna have some very specific workshops where we talk about which things this council wants to budget and which things this council doesn't wanna budget. But delaying a budget vote for three months and asking our staff to operate at a deficiency in their departments is really irresponsible. And so I would urge a no vote on Councilmember Chenier's motion because it is irresponsible budgeting. However, I think what he's trying to do, get the Budget Committee to have some more in-depth conversation. And I think Councilmember Gara mentioned this, even if it doesn't pass, Howard's already committed to having some workshops and discussions moving forward to try to open that process up moving forward is probably the better thing to do. But holding this budget hostage is a real sign from you all, members of this council, to the entire city staff. And I don't mean police and fire, I mean the five thousand employees that work in utilities and solid waste and parks that you don't care that they have to operate at a deficit. And I think that is incredibly irresponsible.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harris, Luloy, then I'm going to make a comment and we're gonna vote.
Just a brief comment, Mayor, thank you. I agree with what Angelique just said. To change the process by holding the budget hostage is not the way to go. Look, at any time, any council member can get a briefing from Dawn and Laney and Howard about all of these things before even the first budget proposal that comes to council. This is the process that we've had for years. And I certainly have been successful in working with it by asking our staff what is what and getting the information that we need. Jay, respectfully, I think you're on the wrong path here and I certainly won't support, support your motion. We can't kick this can down the road. This council voted for those pay increases and those pension increases. Those are contractual obligations. That's where most of the money is going. There, there's no reason to delay this vote because you want to change the process. I appreciate wanting to change the process, but holding the budget hostage to do so, I agree with Angelique, it's irresponsible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Luloy.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, um, I, I can understand the Vice Mayor uh, somewhat of a frustration because um, I felt like the presentation was on this one extreme versus another extreme. So I, I, I can, I can see the concern, but I, I think we need to think beyond that. If there are contractual obligations that we, we've committed to, then we, we really don't have any room to discuss or argue about this. You know, new contracts are coming up, we'll make sure we sharpen our um, uh, pencils on that. Um, and the idea that, you know, we, we have the community response team, you're absolutely right. I think uh, Mister City Manager uh, is um, just indicated that it's gonna take two years for, for this to kinda get, get on uh, get on its uh, feet. Um, I think you're being very optimistic. Um, if I see this uh, community response team, even within the next five years, if it's uh, fully um, um, operational, I, I think we, we've, we've, we've done a gr, great job. Uh, two years is just not based on what I'm seeing and what I've experienced in this short period of time, it's simply just not realistic. Um, you know, I, I heard from some of the callers saying that um, police do not prevent crime. Um, there's no data on that. Um, of course, they do prevent crime. Uh, a perfect example of that is if you're speeding and you see a police officer, you automatically slow down. I mean, that's just the, 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 the reason we have the, the, the police. Um, um, so there, there, there is some concern that, you know, e, e, every time we talk about the police department this last six months, we, we've created a really huge division in our city, um, because we represent each other's district. And we, we've creating this ma, massive gap between police department, our, our community. And we're sending the wrong signals. No city can operate without the police department. I mean, that's the bottom line of it. And no city can be uh, operating without a fire department. Um, do they need some uh, reform and policies? Absolutely. But we, we really need to, I think we need to get off on this high horse of, let's take money from them and push it on this side. Because the data is not in that that's gonna actually improve our community. Uh, there's some districts, I represent districts too. No, we need more police, plain and simple. I mean, I, I don't know where this four thousand votes came in and they had these uh, grandiose uh, um, uh, proposals. But that's not the case. Um, I, I wish that we'd had this wonderful um, utopia of an environment where based on honor system, we'll make the right decision and, and, and the wrong, not make the wrong decision. But we, we live in a real world and simply that does not exist. Um, you know, uh, i, if there is someone that has some kind of a, an aggressive mental illness that are, that are yelling and, and swinging knives around, Bridget Dean will call the police department and say, hey, why don't you guys roll up first and then we follow. I mean, that's just basic common sense unless her team are gonna be uh, well um, uh, trained and, and they're gonna carry certain things to protect themselves. So at one point or another, a, as a council and as a city, we need to recognize how far do we wanna go and um, declassify our first responders. Um, I think we're, we're going the wrong path. I think we're sending the wrong message um, by constantly just poking at these two departments where they, they do protect us. Um, I don't know about you guys, whether there's a three one one that's extremely efficient. If at two o'clock in the morning I hear a noise in my backyard, I'm automatically calling nine one one. I'm not thinking about, well, let me see, maybe I should call three one one. This could be just something that if we just hold each other's hand and sit down and sing kumbaya, the, the problem will go away. Uh, and you know, I just don't think these things are realistic. And we keep sending um, certain messages out there that even gets our, 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 our residents somewhat confused and frustrated. Um, we need the police department. It, it's just a bottom factor. Can we negotiate on the next contract to make sure that they don't have these massive increases? Well, sure, but um, I would hope that my colleagues will somehow stop um, stop um, making, you know, recommendations or sta, statements that might be somewhat popular in this land, uh, this particular climate and really look at facts and, and, and then we should make decisions. We have committed fourteen million dollars to community response in front of this current budget. Is that gonna be enough? Again, we don't have the data to say if that's enough or not. We spent six and a half million dollars on youth ju, just this year. Um, have you seen the data on what that, that has achieved? Not yet, so we, we don't know that, the, 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 the metric on, on that, we're, we're still waiting for. So there is money that's being spent and God knows, we've spent tremendous amount of money on our homeless situation, which I think, you know, we probably need to do more. But this idea that let's take money from here and we put it in affordable housing, we have, we have spent quite amount of dollars on affordable housing and we continue doing that. And I think that's a message that we also need to share with the public, so they understand that where some of this funding is going. Um, so um, with all due respect, uh, Vice Mayor, um, I, I am, I cannot support uh, your um, uh, amendment, simply because if there's a contractual obligation, what are we waiting for? Three months, six months, two weeks, what, what's gonna be the end result? It's just gonna create more frustration with these uh, two organizations that we need in our city. That's the bottom line. And all it's gonna do is just create more gap. It is our job to close the gap. And by just continuously picking on these organizations, I don't know how we can do that. But I'm all for talking about reforms. I'm all for getting these organizations and getting um, uh, uh, public organization around the round table and see. public organization around the round table and see what are the ways that we can improve. But, you know, we spent five hours now on yes, defund, no fund, yes, defund, no fund. And then when we say, well, we should spend more money, give more money to community response team. Well, what's that number? Has any of us sat down with Bridget Dean and say, what's the number that you're looking for at the city manager? So we don't have those numbers yet. So based on that, that's my two cents. And unfortunately, I cannot support Vice Mayor, your motion on this particular time regarding the parking those funds. Thank you.
Last comment. I've listened for a lot of hours and I love the passion of the community and I love the passion of the city council. Even if it's painful, it's good and it's healthy because we're debating real issues. And Vice Mayor Chenier is my dear friend. Been a long time. He's motivated by one thing. He wants to bend the curve of our investment strategy to make sure that more money is going to young people in our communities. I know that's his motive. And that's a great motive and I agree. I do want to disagree on this question of process, however. Because it's the exact same process that we've used all the years you were on the Budget Committee. It's the exact same process we used when we allotted a million dollars to to regional transit so that youth get free passes, a cause you champion. It's the exact same process we used when you led to set up the Youth Commission. It's the exact same process we used for all the good and great work that you and others have done over the course of the years. This is the process. And Councilman Gedda and Vang and Jennings and I did our work. It's the same process. There's been hours of public testimony, of presentations. We compliment the staff for the way they brought this forward. There's nothing wrong with the process here. The issues we're debating are age-old issues and they're vital issues. But this business, the process needs to be fixed and we need the budget audit committee needs to delve more into the police budget? Why don't we talk about the real issues? Talk about binding arbitration or talk about the cost drivers or the pension problem? It's not a process problem, you know? The problem is the problem, not the process. I listened, we listened to hours of testimony and it's both healthy and I am concerned that the community is talking way past each other here. And that, and I suppose it is predictable, given the times that we are living in. What is new under the sun? It's the chief's job, both chiefs' job, to advocate for their departments. It's the community's job on both sides to advocate for one vision or another and it's up to us to be fair, to listen and to govern. I agree. In fact, I've staked my mayorship on the reform agenda. It's so easy to focus energy, and I'm talking about some members of the community here, to focus all your energy on what you are against. You risk failing to see the progress on all that you are for. Think about it. On the public safety arena, we passed the toughest deadly use of force standard in the state next to San Francisco's after a month of debate. We have put forward an inspector general to independently investigate all officer-involved excessive use of force cases that are allowed under the law. We set up a Department of Community Response and yes, it's not fully baked yet. But Bridget Dean is hiring staff as quickly as she can and contracting and and setting up safe ground and doing a ton of work. We can't put more money into this. Not as she wouldn't be able to to put in all the work and put it all to use. Maybe more significantly, to take Vice Mayor Chenier's premise and of course, the premise of our two new colleagues, Councilmembers Valenzuela and Vang. The arc of the city is changing and the arc of our investment strategy is changing in major ways. Look at SBI 5 Exhibit C. Look at Measure U itself. Our team reports that since, over the last couple of years, since 2018, 19, up to before the passage of this budget, if it does pass, this is our Measure U expenditures. $40 million on housing and homelessness. $26 million on youth. $6 million on inclusive economic development and you know how much on public safety? $20 million. The community investments, the youth investments, the housing and homeless investments are far outweighing the increase in public safety. And so this is where I stand. I don't know what defunding means. I know I'm not for it because I do believe we need a a strong police department that is reform-minded. I know that we need to shift calls from the police and the fire departments frankly, to a new way of doing business. The Department of Community Response, we're committed to that and that's going to take some time. I am foretaking every new dollar we gain either through revenue growth or through federal or state assistance. And to put most of that money into the community, the same way we did with CARES, the same way we have done with the second half of Measure U, as evidenced by the document that I just cited. But why can't we do that? And at the same time, add five positions to the police department for doing better background checks so that we can make sure that we're hiring officers who are not who don't have a bad record? Why can't we hire five new officers in comparison to all the money we are putting in the community to help address Public Records Act requests, which which we want more transparency for our police department? We all seem to agree that we ought to put a couple million dollars more into diversifying our fire department. Why is it either or? I know that's the politics of the time that we're living in and I know it's reflected in our community. And I never straddled the middle and I ain't straddling the middle tonight. I will continue to push this city and its expenditure decisions in the very direction that the community is calling for and that many of my colleagues are calling for. But this is not all or nothing. This is a responsible budget. And guess what? We have the opportunity in two weeks now to take $112 million and put it into the community, put the vast majority of it into the community. I know that's exactly what we're going to do. You know, there's so many cliches. You want to make the perfect, the enemy, the good. I don't know how to move the arc of this city faster in the direction that we've been moving it in over the last couple of years. Because guess what? People have very different points of views on these issues. And so you can look at the change or the arc in one vote, one budget, or you can look at it over the course of several years. I think we're doing pretty darn well and I think this budget is worthy of supporting. I urge a no vote on the substitute motion and a yes vote on the main motion. Let's call the roll on the substitute motion, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
No.
Councilmember Luloi?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Yes.
Councilmember Gedda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. Motion is defeated five to four. Let's call the motion on the main budget as amended.
Can I ask just for clarification on the items that I brought up, which is direction on lighting, direction on working with us to create a children's cabinet and $170,000 for the, to reimburse UFC for athletic fields? Those three pieces.
Yeah.
Mayor, can you just clarify the motion so that we have it for the record?
Oh, boy, I'm afraid to, but
It's, I think it's, I think it's simple.
Done, Dawn. It's staff's recommendation, wait, no, it's staff's recommendation, but it includes the diversity component for the fire department. And right now, Councilmember Harris is going to tell you what of Councilmember Chenier's proposals he's accepting. That's it.
I agree to look at the process to get a diversity and equity lens moving forward as part of our process. That piece is okay, but again, Jay agreed that it was a process and not
That's fine.
a tool that was going to be pushed on staff in a rush. I'm okay with looking at field lighting. I think it's worthy of scrutiny to see if we want to go there. Okay, on the $170,000, I don't remember agreeing to that piece. I thought it was part of your alternate motion. But
I would include the $170,000, please.
All right, 170. We got a deal. Let's vote.
Let's go. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Be clear, Dawn, so she accepted all of them and I accept yes as the second to all of those as well. And the answer is yes to the motion on the table.
And Finance Director, do you have the information you need?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the 2.2 and the 170 will be in the budget resolution. The lighting, the youth cap, and the youth cabinet will be follow-up items for the city manager.
Yes, yes.
And the question is whether the equity language in the reso is standing and we're going to add additional follow-up? Or are we changing to Councilmember Chenier's equity language he read it?
Dawn, you need to circle up with Howard on the last piece. Okay. Yes, Mindy.
Thank you. Councilmember Luloi?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gedda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, thank you. That passes seven to two. The budget is completed. Again, thank you. I harp, but you know, it's a healthy and important debate and proud of our city. So
Howard's still smiling. Oh, wait, that's just a picture.
By the way, I'd like to continue the next two items, please. It's, we're not, we're going to continue. Can I get a motion? Continue the last two items.
Mayor, I believe the water item might be time-sensitive.
No, I talked to the city manager. It can
We're good. We're good pushing it for next week.
There is no next week. Are we having a special meeting?
The 29th or something.
Excellent, thank you.
So Mr. Mayor?
We'll take care of it. It's a long day.
Mr. Mayor?
Water is an important subject, so
Mr. Mayor, I do have one caller who's been on hold since 5:00 PM and I also need a motion to continue, item 24, to the June 29th council meeting at 2:00 PM.
And what about 25?
It's a discussion item, so I don't need an action on that. But 24 is a public hearing, so I need that motion.
What about the OPSA item?
Because it's discussion, it doesn't need to move to a time certain, the other does.
Okay, very good. Then the motion is to continue, item 24 to June 29th, okay?
At 2:00 PM. May I take the caller, please, Mr. Mayor?
On that item?
Correct. He's been on hold since 5:00 PM.
Of course, of course.
May I have the caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I support the continuance of this item on the water management and drought plan. Because when we're considering a drought plan in the condition that we are in right now, there should have been more public time for this than it being up for a vote on the same night that it was heard. We put a lot of time in this city into planning processes and listening to the public. This is a really important thing and I think it's good that you're going to give us two more weeks for the public to be involved. My name is Chris Brown and I live in District 5 and I happen to work as a consultant in climate and water issues. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, for your patience in coming. We will continue it because it, water is important. It deserves real attention, not at whatever time it is when everyone's tired. So okay, let's call the roll on the continuance, please.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ashby, a second by Councilmember Jennings, to continue the item to June 29th at 2:00 PM. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Luloi?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gedda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that completes the agenda then for the evening. Are there public testimony items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two callers. May I have the first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the committee council.
Well, yes, this is Lambert Davis. To the Bay and back cheesecakes. I wanted to say that I wanted to send a couple of shouts out to City Councilwoman Vang. Thank you a couple of weeks. You brought up the word procurement and how they study procurement and being a state and federally certified small business, it takes courage to bring up that because there are people that are employing bid peddling and bid rigging. You need to really study what that means. When you brought up about procurement, some people really scrambled that week to answer you. And I know why they scrambled because it's rampant down there. In terms of scrutiny, I wanted to say to Mr. Gera, thank you for bringing up the toxic culture that exists at City Hall. I mean, it is really a problem down there. It's well documented by the local newspapers. And if you study the Barnum and Bailey scandal that involved not only the city manager, but some of his staff members regarding the H&R director, it just confirms what I'm fighting for. If you listen tonight like I did, I studied and when you hear equity and inclusive, those are cold words to people that are resisting that in the city manager's office. They literally are resisting it. It's well documented in the Sacramento Bee, the Sacramento Observer, etc. So we're going to keep fighting because now we're endorsed by some millennials. Our cheesecakes went viral with the Better Business Bureau last week in a women's conference.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
This resembles what happened at Wells Fargo, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Wrong, Sean, dead wrong. You literally just said that police stop crime. They don't. They arrive afterwards until we have thought crimes like from the movie Minority Report. It's literally impossible for them to stop crime before it's been committed. Also, speeding is a traffic violation, not a crime. But even if it was a crime, the speeding has already occurred. In your own example, they didn't stop the crime. The speeding, it had already occurred. You're offensive, Sean. Police weren't already required when we lived in smaller communities and cared for each other. Indigenous people lived for thousands of years without the concept of police. It's ignorant and ahistorical to suggest otherwise. When communities have the care and resources they need, then crime doesn't occur because crime doesn't have to occur. Crime occurs because people are desperate to survive. If they are never desperate in the first place, then the crime doesn't occur unless you think they're inherently genetically criminal and that's racist. Criminals are created, molded by the society around them, molded by the circumstances of their upbringing. All of that results in a person who follows the law or someone who feels the need to do crimes to survive. You're thoroughly uninspired in your thinking. Communities have needed this funding and support for decades, if not longer. Two years is too long. It needs to be ramped up even quicker. Telling them to wait longer is offensive. And Steinberg, there are two sides. One who supports historically disenfranchised communities and wants to see them thrive. That same side is asking for data to prove the efficacy of police before lobbing millions of money at them. We see a society that takes care of the least of these rather than criminalizing their very existence. The other side lives in terror of some made-up boogeyman, made up of sensational The other side lives in terror of some made-up boogeyman, made up of sensationalistic conservative news stations. You feed that narrative so you can get cop union dollars when it isn't remotely the reality. Cops lie because they want to protect their pay, their benefits, their overtime, and their retirement. And to that end, they will deceive to ensure the community is scared into keeping them in their jobs. Stop it. Let data rule the day. Effective programs get funding, ineffective programs don't, period.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, couldn't agree more with what the last caller said, and really just want to call out just the profound undemocratic nature that's been revealed in this council, both tonight and just like the decisions leading up to the budget conversation. Like, in every single meeting that we've had over this budget process for the last month, has literally been combining items, cutting people off in the comment queues, and making sure that any stuff, like any public dissent against the city's status quo budget that you continuously push while simultaneously saying you care about racial equity, racial and gender equity, and addressing like white supremacy that's been rooted in our country's founding, and literally one, and then you wonder why people show up at your fucking houses with ang, like angry at you. You literally lock them out of these public conversations and like reject participatory, the basic principles of participatory democracy. Yes, you, Mayor, you do that on a routine basis. That's why you were to boot it out of the county Democratic Party. And for, like, and all of you that were sitting up there that like stand, like your stand on principle, like, I really appreciate the newest council members that are actually voting their principles, not just sitting up there giving a bunch of flowery talk and then not walking it with their actions. So many of you on this, on this old guard are full of shit, and we've been doing it for years. That's why we have, like, most people don't even pay attention to city council anymore. We have to mobilize and organize people to come out to just deal with this shit. And every time we do, we're subjecting ourselves to more trauma. More reminders that it's, like, according to the majority of this council, we don't matter. Our opinions don't matter, and all this exercise of listening to the budget is just, it's just that.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, y'all are just going to see more of us. This isn't the end.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And Mayor and Council, this is our last caller this evening. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, thank you very much. Richard Wake, City Council, District 5. I'm calling this evening to express my extreme disappointment, again, in the lack of planning to open up cooling centers during the upcoming four days or five days worth of 100-degree-plus temperatures that's starting tomorrow. You know, when the storm, big storm hit January 26, the city council expressed a whole lot of angst about people that died in the street and saying that this will never happen again under extreme weather conditions, yet it did again during the heat wave in May, and now it's happened again with not having proper planning for cooling centers during this upcoming heat wave this week. Now, as I understand it, it didn't, it was being brought forth to get these cooling, the two cooling centers open, none of which are in anywhere in City Council District 5, 6, 7, or 8. To, you know, to get these things open, it was brought to the attention of the people in the city from one of the homeless advocates. And thanks to their work and the two of the other city council members, two cooling centers got open, but that's not nearly enough. I mean, you know, as I understand it, between the last heat wave and now, I don't know what the reasons were the people passed away, but eight more people, eight more people have lost their lives that were living out on the street. And you guys aren't going to vote on this master plan until July, that there's going to be more time after that? And you guys have been kicking this darn can down the road for five years. And you know, not only can we not get the people sheltered and get cooling centers open, we still can't get the adequate things that we need to get in our neighborhoods to get our neighborhoods cleaned up. We're tired of the excuses. You guys need to do better planning to get these cooling centers open immediately.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, the lack of planning on these cooling centers is appalling.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you. Are there council ideas and questions? Council ideas and questions? If not...
Mr. Mayor, I like to just throw something out there.
Sure.
You know, it's late, but I'm going to send this to all my colleagues. I think it is our job to bring communities together, and I just feel the way we're going about it, we're making our residents somewhat frustrated from one side, angry on the other side, confused right in the middle. And the last, not the last caller, but the other two, they sounded pretty upset because simply they don't have the information or the capacity to understand what's really going on. Because each one of us sends us a separate message. So, you know, we can continue dividing our city, hoping for the best, but I just don't see what that is going to gain as far as benefiting our communities, especially the communities that are underserved. So, again, something to think about at almost 11 o'clock at night on a Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laloe. Members and members of the public, members of our city staff, thank you for your patience, for hanging in there a long night, an important night. Nothing else to come before the city council. We are adjourned.